Welcome to the City Commission Meeting Workshop of July 25, 2022. We're going to call this meeting in order, and we're going to skip along to our agenda items, which is the next thing up. And we're going to call upon our Finance Director, Ms. Kelly Strickland, to make a presentation.
Actually, I will start.
Mr. Brown will start.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and thank you, everyone. This is the first of two budget workshops that we have today and tomorrow, and it will culminate in the setting of the tentative millage at a special meeting sometime tomorrow when We'll try to move along as quickly as possible. What I will ask the Mayor and Commissioners, if you'll allow us to get through each section, and then if you have any questions in that particular section, we will respond to those If there's something that's pressing on any of the slides that you believe that you may want to have a response on, please weigh in on those. But we'll go through section by section, and we'll let you know when we are finished with each section, and then you'll be able to respond to any questions. I want to thank, first of all, my fellow child officials, Ms. Griggs and Mr. Fournier, for their assistance on this budget, as well as all the department heads that have done their due diligence in terms of the requests and putting together a budget that you will Also, the Financial Administration Department that worked tirelessly on your budget books and getting you the information for you to make an informed decision as to how we move forward with the 2023 budget. So let me go ahead and get started with the first slide.
For the record, my name is Kelly Strickland, Director of Financial Administration, and the presentation that we're going to do today, we're going to do a little overview to begin with, then we're going to go specifically into the General Fund and the General Fund After that, if we have time, we will either break or move to tomorrow for special revenue funds, enterprise funds, proprietary funds, debt service, and then we'll wrap it up with our CIP workshop. After that, tomorrow, we will adjourn, and we will move into a special meeting for you to give the staff direction on the budget and also to set the tentative millage.
Ms. Strickland, before you get started, again, Mayor and Commissioners, if there is any opportunity for you to want to take a break, let us know. We'll take breaks, and again, we'll also break for lunch if you want to do one hour for lunch, or if you want to take a longer time for lunch, please let us know as well. Go ahead, Ms. Strickland.
The first slide that we have is the total proposed city budget, and what I've showed you here are the expenditures for each fund fact: General Fund, Special Revenue, Debt Service, Enterprise, Internal Service, and the Trust Funds. As you can see in the increase and decrease column, the total budget has increased $18.8 The General Fund specifically has increased 9.6. And I did jump off that very quickly, so... Marlon, would you like to say anything else about this?
And again, Mayor and Commissioners, as you can see from this slide, and I really would like, you know, everyone to kind of pay attention to this. A lot of the increases that you see, especially like in the General Fund, obviously are personnel services increase, you know, we, you know, salaries, FRS increases. We've also had some decrease in our pension and OPEB contributions. You'll see later on some of the impacts of the decisions that the previous commissions have made to help us get our pension abilities and OPEB abilities down. Operating has increased, and as everyone knows, there's a lot of conversations about inflation due to issues like supplies, you know, fuel, contractual services, materials. You know, we are not protected by some of these inflationary costs, and again, that is reflected in some of our operating increases that you see on this slide related to the Some of the big costs implications that we have, obviously Bobby Jones has started, and obviously we have debt payments to make on that, and that's coming out of the General Fund as well. Street sweeping, which many of you, you know, know is a cost that we previously related to our gas taxes. We've moved that out of our gas tax because of the amount of money that we're receiving in that revenue, and we've put that into the General Fund to continue street sweeping Special revenues, pennies up in terms of our sales taxes, multimodal impact fees are up as well, and some of the costs that we have started to spend down in our CRE and our Economic Development Fund. Our tourist development fund, that is up about $700,000, and that's due to the project that we're doing with the Lido Dunes. Enterprise funds, there is an increase of 1.6 million, and again, that is a transfer out from the General Fund into the Enterprise Fund to help pay the debt service for Bobby Van Wiesel, we're expecting a full year of shows for the Van Wiesel, so again, there's increased costs associated with that. And then solid waste, there is a $1.2 million increase in our solid waste expenses. Internal Services Funds, fleet in terms of fuel, tech, information technology moving to the cloud, and then our self-insurance claims, those are all up in terms of the internal service funds. Trust Funds, the increase is due to our retiree medical claims, and we will talk a little bit more about that as we get through the budget as well. So with that, Mayor and Commissioners, this is one section that we have completed. We're going to move to property taxes. Any questions on that first slide?
Just on the first slide? Any Commissioners have any questions? So the General Fund is increasing by 7.5 million, and Bobby Jones is coming out of that, is included in that, is 1.5 million roughly. Are we going to go in depth into each and every one of these? Yeah, let's move on.
As the City Manager mentioned, we're moving into property taxes now. This slide just compares where we were last year at this time to where we are this year at this time, and as you can see, the taxable value of the city has increased 17.85%. I want to point out that the Newtown CRA and the Bay are a portion of the city, and if you break out just those areas, you can see that the Newtown area increased 16.06% and the Bay increased 40.39%. And on the bottom of this slide, you'll see the base shares for the CRA and the TIF, I mean for the Bay TIF. I want to explain the TIF, Tax Increment Financing. So the difference between the base year and the current year is the amount of revenue that goes to each of those districts, and later on, you'll see the revenues. But right now, the value is 13.5 mils, or the value of one mil is 13.5, excuse me. This is the history of our taxable values, and you can see in 2012, 2013, that was our lowest point, and in fiscal year '23, we far exceeded our values that we have on this chart and also any year prior to that. This chart gives you an example of every year we either have an increase or a decrease in our assessed values. And as you can see, in 2012, we were all jumping for joy when we had an increase of That wasn't a decrease, and it was a fantastic time, and you can see how the increase has gone up and down, but just keep in mind that is an increase. And of course, for our current year or tax year 2022, fiscal year '23, our values increased And this just summarizes where we are. So our taxable value is $14,762,961,792. A 17.85% increase, that will yield $42.7 million in tax revenue, and how that is broken up is the General Fund has 40 million, Newtown CRA, the TIF portion receives 256,000, and the Bay TIF receives 1.7 million. These numbers are at a proposed millage rate of 3.0000. This budget is proposing a millage decrease from 3.1372 to 3.0000. And again, the value of one mil is 13.5 million. As you can see, the total reduction in revenue is 1.9 million. 1.863 of that is from the General Fund. In this slide, we wanted to do some research and see what our neighbors are doing, our other local governments within Sarasota County. I will say the county millage of 3.4463 is the rate that they advertised. They put all of their numbers together.
Yeah. Can I switch your hand across?
I don't have that page in my backup material.
This was a new one that was sent out Friday.
Okay.
First action of the week.
Yep.
Well, I had my book with me, so.
Friday afternoon, we, we made some changes since we put the book out a few weeks ago.
Is it in this information we were just given? Okay. All right. I don't want to stop. Go ahead. I'll look for it. Maybe it's here somewhere.
So what we did is, is we contacted each of these municipalities, and since they have had their budget workshops and we haven't, it was, we were able to get what they were proposing in their budget. So you can see that the, the county has a slight decrease, and that's primarily because of their debt service of .3%. The school board has a decrease of 6.5%. They're actually reducing their millage. Venice is not reducing its millage. Northport is not reducing its millage, and Longboat Key is reducing their millage 5.9%. And to compare those with the City of Sarasota at the proposed millage of three mils, we are at a 4.4% decrease. This slide just summarizes in numbers the values since 2013, our taxable values, our General Fund millage, our debt service millage, so that you can see that in a numerical format. And you can also see in the last column, the number of dollars that are generated from This slide, this graph was included to give you a history of the city's adopted millage rate. 10 mils is the maximum millage that is allowed that the city can adopt. In the early years, the millage was at the maximum, and this is more than likely due to the lack of any other non-advalorem revenues that were available to support governmental services such as sales tax, franchise fees, excise tax, et cetera. The major decrease you see is in 1997 and 2000 is due to a transfer of fire services to the county. We phased that in, and the next decrease occurred in 2008, when the state legislator penalized local governments for not using a rollback rate when they had a period of an economic boom. Unfortunately, that boom didn't last. Our city manager is once again proposing that the city reduce its millage rate from 3.1372 to three mils for the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. And this is a comparison of the current year versus the fiscal year '23. And you see the General Fund is proposed with a decrease. The debt service, just because the nature of that, we haven't issued any new, new debt in our governmental funds, so our debt service has gone down. Also, the Golden Gate, their operating millage is, is the same, and they ask for a millage to do their operating needs for their streetscape. Their debt service is going down, so overall, Golden Gate will have a decrease. And then St. Armond's bid and the Downtown Improvement District have a two mil. This next slide is just a copy of what your dollar looks like when you live in Sarasota, the City of Sarasota. So 47 cents goes to the school board, 25 cents goes to the county, 20 cents goes to the City of Sarasota, and all others, 8 cents. I took a look at previous years to see how this looked. Last year, and you see at the top, this is how your 2021 tax year looks. This is, this is what you have currently just paid for this tax year. Last year, for tax year '20, we were also, the city also was at 20 cents. There wasn't much change in the numbers. In 2019, the city's portion was 22 cents of your dollar. And then in 2018, it was also 22 cents of the dollar. Okay. We are, in this budget, we're proposing for fiscal year '23 with 802 employees. Each position requested represents an increased level of service to the city. This chart does not include part-time employees. And if you are, want details of the 802, you can look in, on page 17 of the summary of all funds that's in your book.
Ms. Strickland, before you go on, this is a new section that we're getting into personnel, and so we just got through the property taxes and the millage. Any general questions about that? Sorry. What?
All right. I'll carry on with personnel. So there are 25 new positions that are proposed in this budget, and I believe that we gave the workbook information out to you three weeks ago. Since then, we've had a late request. We have an additional personnel position requested for a communications specialist in the PIO office. This slide breaks out the positions, so there's actually 26 positions that we're requesting. There are going to be 15 that are requested in the General Fund and 25 that are requested in solid waste, parking, Van Wiesel, and information technology.
Actually, 16, 16, 16. Is that 25?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Yes, I'm your finance director. I can't count. We did, also did some, some due diligence, and we checked with our neighboring partners, local governments to find out what they were doing in their budget. Sarasota County proposed 81 additional positions. Sarasota County School Board proposed 2,408 positions. I don't think there's a little, there's much apples to apples with those comparisons. However, when you look at the municipalities, Venice proposed seven, Northport proposed 49.5, and Longboat Key did not propose any. And the City of Sarasota is proposing 26.
So, may I commission us, if I can just stop here, if we can request the administrative assistants to bring those pages to the commissioners. Apparently, they don't have these new pages, so Pat, if you can see if Alexia and/or Christina can bring those pages.
No, I don't. We didn't get it either. Our office didn't have it.
I know what's going on there. Thank you.
Do you want to carry on or wait? It's not me, no.
No.
You want to carry on or wait?
Would you like to carry on or wait?
We can carry on. We can carry on, just as long as I have it afterwards to sort of.
So this slide talks about our other considerations that are salary-related, our pensions. And the change, as you can see, except for the police officer's pension, every pension, the annual contribution was decreased. The General Fund was decreased 151,536. The police officer's pension, which is an open plan, increased 484,428. The firefighter pension decrease was 1,299,141. And the OPEB decrease was 1,522,272 in a decrease. And I also, this information has been requested several times. So our GE plan is 76.7% funded. Our police officers, which is open plan, is 91.3% funded. The firefighter pension is closed, and it is 98.3% funded, and that is projected to be closed at 100% on September 30th, 2023. That's a partnership between the city and the county. Once the plan is fully funded, then the expenses that we have to pay are whatever expenses the plan has, and also if our interest investments, we have to watch them. If there's a good year, that's great. If there's a bad year, then maybe our contribution may go up. The OPEB decreased, and that is 93.2% funded. Taking a look back in history, the GE plan closed in 2011, and at that time, it was 75.2% funded. Factors that have an effect on the change, or no change really in this particular case, are investment returns, the allowance of lump sum distributions, such as when someone retires, they have an option to take an annual or a monthly amount, or they can take the whole amount, which could be a million, one, $2 million at one time. That changes all of the investment strategies. Another is that the GE plan, now that most of the participants are getting close to retirement, we have a smaller employee base for the contribution, and it's a dollar-based amount rather than a percentage base for our contribution on that. We are planning, though, however, to have it fully funded within the next 16 years. We do an actuarial report every year. The actuarial tells us how much money we need to contribute to meet that 16-year deadline. That's why you see increases or decreases, and a lot of that determines on the market. If there's a, a very good market and we've earned a lot of interest, what they take is they smooth it, and they smooth it from this point to the end. Or if there's a decrease, they don't hit us with all of it the next year, they smooth it throughout the, from now until the end of that time. We originally did our first OPEB reform in 2013, with our funding ratio was only 49%. With the medical plan design changes and the increased premiums to the retirees, the funded ratio began slowly to rise from 2014 to 16. In 2017 and into 18, the commission directed us to roll back these changes that were made in '13 and do an OPEB reform that's slightly different. This provided for changing the retirees' premiums and to provide a number of other benefits to the retirees, such as a group Medicare plan. With these directed changes, the funded ratio went from 55% down to 51% in 2017. However, the changes were implemented in 2018, have stayed in place throughout the funded ratio, and the funded ratio continues to rise. This is exactly what we intended when we did the reform, both in '13 and in '19.
And again, may I commission us, the slide is very important, because if you remember, those of you who may have sat on the commission, a number of individuals have, you know, repeatedly come down here saying how the city is going bankrupt, how our unfunded liability is just, you know, off the charts, how, you know, in two, three years, you know, we'll be, you know, we'll be going bankrupt. This commission, as well as previous commissions, or some of you who may have been on previous commissions, have made some tough, tough choices with individuals coming down here saying, "Don't do these reforms. Don't do these reforms. They're going to impact us." But, you know, this commission stood firm, and the result that you're seeing today in terms of a lot of these funds almost being fully funded is a result of those actions that you took. So again, you know, commissioners, I know that, you know, sometimes we ask you to make tough decisions, and it's ready for the best, not only for our community and taxpayers, but for the overall functioning of our government.
That's the end of my citywide presentation. I'm fixing, I am getting ready to move into the General Fund overview. Is there any question about personnel, pensions, anything?
Yes. I have a couple of questions. So 25 new positions overall.
26.
26 new positions overall. The justification for the need was, for every single department was greater service. Can you provide, can there be a little bit more of an explanation as to what that means? Because especially in some departments, like the Police Department, we just hired 10 new additional police officers, and now we're talking about an extra three, and, yeah.
So when we get into those departments, you will see the specific justification of each one of those.
Excellent. Okay. And then the fact that they're closed means that we still have to fund it 100%, but that number's not going to go up?
Well, it depends on how the market's doing at that time. It'll be 100%, but if the market does really bad, we may lose a lot, and then that will help, we'll have to contribute to keep it at 100%. And what, what changes it is the participants in the plan.
No more participants?
Right.
It's closed out? Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you.
So we're going to look at the General Fund. And just as a reminder, what is the General Fund? It's our main operating fund, and that's where we report all of our financial resources that we are not required to report somewhere else. Revenues such as advalorem, other general revenue taxes, license and permits, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, interest income are all accounted for in the General Fund. The expenditures that are paid out of the General Fund are the police, our landscaping, our streets and highways, our code enforcement, our planning, parks and rec, and then our central services like facilities, human resources, financial administration, city manager's office, the city auditor and clerk. This is a view of the General Fund, the revenues and the expenditures, a summary, and it compares it to last year's budget for the General Fund. If you take a look at the revenues and look to the variance column, our revenues were projecting at 6.4 million over what we projected last year. And then further down in our expenditures, our expenditures, we're, we're projecting 7.5 million increase in expenditures. And the total difference of revenues and expenditures, the variance, is 1,110,000 for the proposed budget, 3,168,000. And not to skip out, but to remember what we're comparing it to is our current budget, where we had a deficit of 2.2 million, 58,174,000.
You have a question?
No. We'll take a look at our General Fund revenues. Our major revenues that are in the General Fund that we pay particular attention to are franchise fees, utility excise taxes, communication service taxes, half-cent sales tax, and state shared revenues. This slide compares last year to the proposed budget, or the current year to the proposed budget, and you can see the differences. Revenues are projected in fiscal year '23 with a 6.4 million increase from the budget of fiscal year '22. Advalorem revenues appear to have increased 9.82%. That utilizes the proposed rate of three mils. Also, this budget assigns an increment of 1.7 to the Bay and 256,000 to Newtown CRA. This slide provides more detail and specific revenues that are projected with an increase and a decrease. Most taxes, specifically sales tax, franchise fees, and fines, specifically the red light cameras, are increasing. Interest income is projected to decrease. Just as a note, we do not budget unrealized gains and losses. We are required to post them on our final financial statements as that's the market In this budget, we have transfers from the CRA for direct operational costs. We have a transfer of a million dollars from the gas tax for streetlights and other operational oversight of the streetlights. And we also have 493,000 from development application, and that covers the cost of processing those applications. We're going to take a look at the General Fund expenditures now. As mentioned previously, there are 15 personnel budget issues included in this proposed budget. The total fiscal year '23 proposed The total fiscal year '23 proposed expenditure budget is 85,671,000, which is an increase of 7,514 from fiscal year 2021-22. This is primarily due to personnel costs, reductions in pension contribution expenses, increase in supplies, materials, and fuel, and other operating costs, and the addition of the debt service payment for Bobby Jones. If you take a look at development services, you will see a large increase there. And that is because per the rules of Florida statute 553.8 regarding the city's responsibilities of enforcing the Florida Building Code, we have reallocated salaries to the building, or from the building fund that were specifically related to general fund and weren't qualified for the building fund as expenses. Also, I want to point out that IT costs are, have went up. And the main reason for that is that most IT functions are moving to the cloud. In the past, they have been on-prem, and we were able to purchase hardware. And those purchases could be purchased out of our capital funds. However, they no longer qualify when they're in the cloud, because now it's a maintenance cost, which is an operational cost. You're going to see across the city that the IT allocations have gone up, and that is particularly the reason why. Also, let's go to the, the police. If you'll recall, in mid-year, a couple of months ago, we added 10 police officers to their budget, so that wouldn't show up in their original '22 budget, but does affect the '23 proposed budget. And that's a major reason for the increase in that budget. And now to summarize.
Commissioner Hargitze?
Just if you could go back one slide?
Okay.
On the code compliance, it goes down, but we're proposing to add one person?
What we did in code compliance, code compliance is part of development services. So when we went through and we reviewed where people were supposed to be paid versus where we were paying them, that also was affected. Some of the code compliance people were moved around to development services, or else there were people in code compliance that needed to be moved to the building fund.
And as we go through the, when we get into the individual departments, when that sort of thing shifts from where we used to fund it to where we're now funding it, if you could just point that out?
I will.
Sometimes it's a little...
Okay. Will, will do.
Thank you.
Now, just to wrap up where we are in the general fund, this slide I put together, our beginning unassigned fund balance is 30,981,000. Our revenues before a millage decrease would be 84,366,000, and expenditures of 85,000, 85,641,000. That gives us a deficit of 1,305,000. When we lower the millage from 3.1372 to 3 mils, that's an additional deficit to the general fund of 1,863,349. So we are proposing in the general fund to use fund balance to balance it at 3,168,984. Our projected unassigned fund balance at September 30th, 2023, is 27,812,579. This is 32.5% percentage of unassigned fund balance to the operating expenses. And as I've told you time and time again, our policy, the city policy and the GFOA best practices is to fall somewhere between 17 and 25%, which gives you two to three months of operations in the event of a disaster. We're somewhat over that, even with using down the fund balance of 3.1 million dollars.
And again, Mayor Commissioners, that's an important note to make, that, you know, usually it's, you know, some, some associations like GFOA, you know, even the auditors may frown on how much fund balance you have, but yet still with the reduction, or my proposed or recommended reduction in the millage, including the use of fund balance, we're still at 32.5%, which, again, the top threshold is 25%. So again, Commissioners, you know, kudos to you as well in terms of some of the decisions that you have made, making sure that, you know, we remain fiscally sound as an organization. And Mrs. Strickland would kind of show where we have been historically as well.
Question for you. 3.1 million use of proposed fund balance, where's that going?
That is to balance the budget. That's revenues minus expenses.
Mm-hmm. So is it going to one-time expenses, or is it going?
It's a combination. It's a combination of that. As I mentioned, we have the Bobby Jones transfer. When the Bobby Jones is built and we have revenues, we, we hope not to see that transfer for that debt service payment. However, there are personnel costs in here that would be reoccurring.
Because the concern, and I don't know if this was taken into consideration during, during your deliberations, but, you know, we, a $3 million decrease in our proposed fund balance for an ongoing obligation is unsustainable in the long term, because we have an obligation that is ongoing forever and a very limited fund balance. So is, do we know how we account for that, for that?
I agree, sir. But the, we're at this point with our fund balance that we, we don't want too much, but yet then we, we don't want to bring it down too much. And then our rating agencies are going to be looking at us as we go out to borrow, and they're going to look at that fund balance. One of the things that they look at, they look at the millage rate. Do they see is the commission willing to move with the times? Is the commission willing to raise it if necessary? And then they're going to look at our fund balance, and if they see that we've used our fund balance, they're going to, they're going to dig in and say, "Why are we using that?" Our response is going to be because our costs have increased, we have to take care of our personnel, and we also, but half of that increase is a non-reoccurring cost.
Let me, Mayor, Mayor and Commissioners, let me also add this. Remember that every year, you assess an ad valorem assessment. That has been going up each year. Obviously, you know, there may be a downturn in the future, but that's where a lot of your recurring expenses will come about. Remember that your taxes that you're seeing right now is based on 2022. If you look up, look at our, our landscape, you see a lot of development going on, so we don't even know what '23 is going to bring yet. So again, you know, to your point, Mayor, how do we sustain this? We sustain this by, you know, getting ad valorem taxes every year. And so, yes, you may see a $3 million reduction in our fund balance, which, which I believe we should use. Some of this is recurring, but again, if you look at how much money we have generated from the previous year in terms of ad valorem, I will venture to guess that what we're using in terms of recurring dollars here, you will get back next year, and probably, you know, the, the following year as well.
And, and I agree partially in what you're saying, but I'd like for us to take into consideration the fact that we can't, that rests on the assumption that we're going to continue to grow at the rate that we've been growing, and that construction and new development is going to, it's going to, it's not increase, but sustain itself. And, you know, that's, as we learned in '08 and '09, and we learned in '89 and '90, and we learned 18 years prior to that, that just doesn't happen. Commissioner Hargitze?
And to your point, Mayor, and I think it's a pretty valuable question to ask, and I believe, Ms. Strickland, you just said, "Half is going to be recurring and half isn't." I think that is a number that the mayor, which is a good point to ask for. How much of this 3.168 million is going to be a recurring expense, and how much is just a one-time? How much are we going to be responsible for in the future?
Bobby Jones debt service payment is 1.6 million dollars.
So that's half of that right there.
Okay. So it is half.
And also remember, and Ms. Strickland is going to go through this, you also have a revenue stabilization fund. That was specifically established, you know, Mayor, for downturns in the economy, and we have not tapped into that, I believe, Ms. Strickland. Have I ever?
Ever.
And where, where is that?
You, you'll see.
That's on your balance sheet.
Is that a special revenue fund?
No. It's in your general fund. It's on your balance sheet. It's a reserve.
You'll see it.
Okay.
So this gives us a history of where we've been with our fund balance over the past 15 years. And you can see, I've got in there the lines for the 17%, 25%. You can see where we are. 2006 was our highest, and we were about 35 and a half percent at that point. So as Mar, as our city manager mentioned, we have a revenue stabilization fund, and this is part of the general fund fund balance. It's a reserve, and every year we look at it, we take it, make a calculation of our budget, and then we make sure that we have it reserved. It is currently 2,640,554. So we have that in addition to our 32% of unassigned fund balance to expenditures. We have a policy that only, we can only use this if a third of our revenue declines. So as city manager mentioned, we haven't, we haven't touched this since we established it. Present-day considerations, our bond ratings. Our bond ratings are currently for Moody's, our general obligation, big A, little a1, and an AA plus for Fitch. That is the second highest rating. We are striving to get the AAA. The factors for this is a strong liquidity of unrestricted cash, strong financial policies, and adequate levels of fund balance to mitigate any risk, and a low debt burden. That is the conclusion of the overview. Any questions?
Mayor Commissioners, if you have any questions and/or if you want to take a break, that's totally up to the commission.
Bobby Jones. Bobby Jones debt service was supposed to be 1.1 something million, and then that was, it was projected to be in prior financial plans, and now it's looking like it's closer to 1.4. Is that going to fluctuate as we move forward? Because that is the, the, you know, the recurring costs that we're going to be, be paying out of the general fund?
Our payment for '23 is 1.6 million.
1.6?
Yes. And that is...
That's a debt, on the debt, right?
Yes. We transfer it out of the general fund to the debt service fund and pay it out of that. And that will continue until the golf course opens and has sufficient funding to make the debt service payment.
It's 1.6, just...
It, it's just right in that area.
Okay.
It'll be.
And the 1.6 does not include what we're paying Indigo?
No, that's a management fee. That's operating.
All right. Is there, last year we budgeted, you know, 70... So we, we, our expenditures were under last year, under what we budgeted. Is that correct?
Yes, and that normally is the case every year. There's usually about a 2.5% difference in the budget versus the actual.
Mm-hmm. And so knowing that we spent less, we, you believe that this proposed budget for this year that will, that will perform better than anticipated as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. That our expenses are going to, our revenues are going to exceed what we, the projected revenues and our expenses are going to?
I just, I don't want to come back to you throughout the year with various budget amendments that say we need to use fund balance.
My concern is that even though we budget for, let's say, 80, or, you know, we, we budget for, the revenues, let's say we budget for 76, and then we end up bringing 80 million in for the general fund, that we are now budgeting for 82. So we're, we're going higher, even though it seems counterintuitive since we're, we're, you know, we should be kind of knowing that we're going to do, do better with less.
In our last budget workshops for fiscal year '22, we were just coming out of COVID, and we were extremely conservative in our revenue projections, and what we've seen from that time to now is that our revenues have been coming in a lot higher than what we projected. So that has been very helpful in this budget. A good example are the red light cameras. We thought that people would just stop driving. Gas is so high, but our red light, red light cameras are, we're at $1 million right now, and we only budgeted 300,000.
Excellent. All right. No question for me. Brody, any questions? Okay. Does anyone need a break? Excellent. We can move forward.
Okay. I switch out PowerPoints for you. And we'll start taking a look at the general fund departments. And on each of these slides, at the top, I put a tab number, so if you're going in your hard copy, you can look at that tab number, and that's where we're at. The first department that we talk about is unclassified administration. Now, this is not a department, and the reason we call it unclassified, it's a place where city obligations that don't really fit into any other specific budget go.
Before you get started, Mayor Commissioners, what Ms. Bennett is handing out slides, just in case there are any slides that may be missing, or that you may not have, but you should, hopefully you should have everything on this section.
So what I have in tab one, this is supplemental to, to tab one. I'm not sure I understand. That's the PowerPoint that we just went through, that she just passed out. No, this is what's on the screen. Okay.
So this, this has not been previously handed out to the Commissions?
Oh, right. These, this has never been. This is just to keep me on track to, through your books. So now's the time, if you're looking at your books or looking online at your books, that's where you follow me.
So on tab one?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is supplemental to tab one?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Let's make sure we explain to the Commissions before we get started, okay?
Okay, does everybody have tab one in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So the unclassified administration is where obligations that we have that don't fit into any specific department. Most notable change on the unclassified administration budget is our reduction in the OPEB contribution for retirees. Also, take note that the information service charges have increased. I mentioned this to you before. As most services are moved from on-prem to the cloud, this cost will continue to increase in the operating funds, and it'll be a decrease in our capital funds. Sarah said a police de...
So that was the time for questions?
If you have any questions.
I have questions. It looks here like logo design is increasing to 32,000. The contract was at 25.
We...
Should we just put a little bit of a cushion on there?
And same with lobbying. Lobbying, the total contract's 1.5 million over three years, and we're budgeting 93,000.
Remember, we do it one year at a time. We don't, we don't budget for more than one year.
No, but I'm saying the total contract is for 1.150,000 for the lobbying for Southern Strategies.
So Southern Strategies over three years, that's 50,000, and then we also have the federal lobbying contract as well.
You, you are wise, and you make sense. So... Looks like property insurance is going, sort of trending in the, in the right direction, but then regular insurance is going up significantly by over $25,000. Is there a reason that the St. Arment restroom is not, has nothing budgeted for it?
Yeah, that, we decided not, or the bid decided not to move forward with that again.
Okay.
This was actual use of a porter that we would provide, so we're not moving forward with that restroom.
And what are information services charges?
That is the IT charges that I've referred to, information technology.
Mm-hmm.
And that is a separate-
For the cloud.
Right.
They do have a separate fund.
They do have a separate fund, and the way that they fund their operation is charging to other deci, other departments within the city. It's an allocation.
So those two, that 2 million is being charged throughout the city?
No, the 2 million is the general-
It'll be, it will be, okay.
Of it. And then you'll, you'll see in each special revenue and proprietary fund budget that there's an IT charge.
Okay. Which has nothing to do with this?
No, this is just the general fund's portion.
This is general fund's portion, and it is increasing tremendously because of cloud-
Operating expenses. We no longer can charge services to capital because we don't have anything to put in our hand, bricks and mortar, or pizza boxes, as the Hermenea refers to it. It's all in the cloud, and instead of charging us for the equipment, they're charging us maintenance cost, which is an operating cost.
And that's an operating cost of the city, or is that an operating cost of, that is being passed on to us from the cloud provider?
Well, if you want the service, you're gonna pay the cloud's provider.
Yes, ma'am. It is passed on for, to us, and then we allocate that to different departments.
What I'm asking, saying is, it's at cost?
It's at cost.
Okay. It's at cost. Okay. All right, that's it for this, this portion.
At cost. Any other questions?
Not for now.
So our first department is the Sarasota Police Department. Their revenues are primarily fines, which include red light camera revenues. The increase has contributed because, as I mentioned previously, with COVID-19, we, we budgeted very conservatively. However, we found that the revenues have exceeded our expectations greatly. The expenditures are primarily personnel, and the difference includes the 10 officers that we added mid-year, plus three staffing additions, which include one communication specialist and two crime scene investigators. The operating costs have increased for items such as supplies and fuel, and that's been taken into consideration in this budget. There are 190 sworn positions and 58 civilian positions. Are there any questions about the new positions that are being requested?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have 10 new police officers. First year, it's gonna cost us, I'm using, I'm going off memory right now, it's like 1.8 million for the first year because of the initial startup cost, but then it's gonna cost us about 1.1 moving forward?
Correct.
There's still $3 million added on here.
There is.
And it's significantly more than, you know, than last year, and it doesn't account necessarily for the three positions that we're going to be hiring, two of which will be part-time, if I believe.
These three are full-time.
These three are full-time? So, I mean, let's say, let's say it's 300,000 dollars. We still have, you know, 2 point something million that-
Okay.
Is there-
Well, in addition, you've got your pension costs. You've also got-
Pension, okay.
We have included a dollar rate for potential increases. However, we're still in negotiations, so we, we don't know what that's gonna be.
And, and you're saying pension costs, but isn't OPEB in contribution an unclassified administration expense?
OPEB went down. However, the police pension is, went up 400,000?
485.
485.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just wondering where, you know, where the full, is there a breakdown of where the full-
If you look at tab two, you'll see the breakdown of the police department's budget.
Commissioner Hearn, gotcha.
So to Mayor's question, on tab two, page three of the documents that we have, it's under the Bureau of Patrol Operations, and it has 22 to 23, the full-time positions, 118 to 109. So sometimes on these pages, when we're asking for like an increase in staff, and then the positions go down, go, I just, I don't know where they're being shifted, and it just, you could clarify that in some of these departments?
There are five different cost centers within the police department, and they, they move their positions around frequently.
Right.
The overall amount doesn't change, but just moving it from one cost center to another cost center will change.
Okay. It's just a little bit confusing because on the next cost center, under investigations, it goes up by two, which I know that there are two positions in there. I just don't know how they're being shifted around, and to go from 118 to 109 just seems-
That would have to be, you would have to speak with the-
Would you like us to bring the chief down?
Yeah, I just want to get a little clarity on this.
Chief, could you come on down, please?
So I can better understand. I know it's so confusing, but this is the time to ask the questions for this, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Then introduce yourself and explain the shifting of personnel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chief Rex Troche, Sarasota Police Department.
Shanna, Finance Manager.
And I will let Shanna go into detail in regards to your question. You want to repeat your question?
Yeah, so we have the five departments here, and the personnel numbers, they, they shift around. So they go from 22 to 23. For example, under the Bureau of Patrol and Operations, it goes from 118, if the numbers are correct, 118 to 109. And then under Criminal Investigations, it goes from 41 to 43, which makes sense. And then in the Support Services, it stays the same. And then under Professional Standards Division, it goes from 30.4 to 48.4.
So as we're establishing the budget through, usually this is done back in March or April, and we're kind of working with city finance on that. People do move around frequently based on operational need, and I think the chief could probably speak to that a little bit more, but all of the positions-
This is not additions. It's just some shifting that happened.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
So based on those operational needs, they'll move people around, and so whatever the timestamp was at that particular time is probably what you're seeing, and then it's probably changed since then. So people move frequently.
Okay. It's reflecting the shifting in positions as well as adding and then people leaving or being let go or whatever?
Yes, ma'am.
I see now. Okay. I was just seeing it as full adding or taking away and not shifting. Thank you.
Ms. Bennett, as we was here, the mayor had a question about some of the increased costs in operating. Could you kind of share with the mayor and the Commissioners, as well as the public, why we've seen some of the increased costs?
Sure. Put together some highlights for you, because I figured you'd have some different questions on that. One of the big things that we saw this year was increase in fuel. So as fuel costs have gone up, one of that particular cost in general went up 69% as we looked at it. So it was about a $291,000 increase just in our fuel costs that we're anticipating for next year with the increase in fuel. Yes.
Do you classify fuel as personnel services, as operation expenditures, or just capital expenditures?
Operating expense. And then we also have, as Ms. Strickland spoke about, our software and maintenance costs, which are for, for the software that we use, that was about a 17% increase throughout the year. So as we're looking at that, it was about 106,000 increase. We also saw an increase on our operational costs for police liability, auto liability, building insurance. So that was up about 11%, about a $67,000 to $70,000 increase. And then we have seen just general increases overall. So for example, our vendor who sells us our police uniforms and those kinds of things is seeing increases anywhere from 5% to 22% for next year. So that's-
Do we know if it's 5% or 22%?
It depends on, so we buy different things from different, so this vendor sells many different brands, and so depending on that brand, it could be, you know, in the contract that it's increased. Also, our training and travel went back up just a little bit. We did reduce that significantly during COVID years. So the officers are working on getting their certifications back in line and continuing on with the training.
And these three new positions that are being requested, how much is that gonna be? How much is that gonna increase about?
Bear with me one second.
Probably 300,000, I'm guessing?
So the communication specialist, with all the roll-up costs, is about 87,905. And then the two personnel for the crime scene investigators, I'll get that total for you.
240.
Is 183,435. And that also includes a vehicle for them to utilize for the two crime scene.
That, that includes the cost of the vehicle-
And any roll-up costs.
That includes insurance, it includes everything.
Yes, sir. Yes.
So we're looking at 200 and-
267,000.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Brody.
Body cameras, were they in, is this the first time we're seeing those in our budget, or was that last year?
So we, we had some body camera funds that we did for this fiscal year that we put in the budget. We did roll over some of our initial costs, so when we were initially doing those body cameras, there were some costs that we were not sure how fast we could implement the program. So we rolled those over. This is the first year that we're seeing no funds rolled over from the previous year, so it's just the full cost of the, of the body camera program in the budget.
Okay, and how much did that end up being?
I'm sorry, I don't have that number off the top of my-
Approximately, I don't need to know.
Commissioner, if we can get a number for you?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering, because I know we had discussions about how much the, we were kind of speculating as to how much the redaction and all that cost would be. I was just wondering how much it actually was.
I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head. I apologize.
That's all right.
And we're talking about a lot of increases, just citywide. Have we made any cuts? What, what areas of opportunity have we identified as, you know?
We are constantly looking at things. I know as the police department went through their budget, each cost center really looked at their budget. They looked at software, they looked at every, every little inch. They go through line by line and look at things they can cut, things that they can, you know, take away, they don't need anymore. So I feel like they have gone through each line as best they could to find any cuts. We are just seeing a lot of just general increases.
Thank you. I got too excited with the budget, budget season. I cut Commissioner Brody off. Please finish your line of questions.
So how many sworn officers will this budget bring us to?
190.
Okay. And is that active, or are those just budgeted, that's budgeted officers?
Those are just budgeted, sir.
Okay.
And just to go back to the body camera, that division is 761,000.
Okay. Is that what it was last year about?
Well, as she mentioned, we had funds that we rolled forward that we were able to use.
As far as the expenses go, was it about that much?
Approximately. Yeah, it's, there wasn't much change. The added positions last year.
Okay, that's all.
All right. Any other questions, Commissioner? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
On tab three, you'll find the city commission. And this budget went up a total of $57,961. Are there any questions? Hold on. There's one full-time position, and that, that's Christina.
Yes, Christine, and then what, what do you attribute that increase to?
FRS. Every new employee is on FRS.
All right. No questions there. Come here.
City manager's budget is on tab four. This budget went up 183,000. There are six full-time positions in here. The city manager, the independent police coordinator, the governmental relations person, the marketing coordinator, the grants coordinator, and the administrative assistant. The dollars went up because I believe we moved the grants coordinator back into this budget.
Ms. Strickland, Commissioner Hearn Koch, over the weekend, I forgot to forward this to you, there was a position called a process analyst, and she wanted to know, I myself wanted to know who the process analyst was in the city manager's office.
That was Laura.
That was Laura. Okay, so it's a grants coordinator.
So the grants coordinator is in the city manager's office?
Yeah, moved from the financial administration.
It is. And we also have a, a marketing coordinator that was moved into that budget also.
Okay.
Okay, the public information office is tab five. This is the budget where we are requesting an additional personnel for an additional communication specialist. Currently, there are two full-time positions in this budget.
Is it, there are currently two full-time positions, but one of them is unfilled, is that correct?
He is leaving this week.
Okay, so-
Who's that?
Jason. Mr. Bartolone took a position with Northport as the new communications manager, who will be overseeing the entire communications department. So it's a good position for him, one that obviously he could not refuse, and it's an opportunity for him to be a department head over in Northport, so.
Also, for this budget, I'd like to mention that 25% of it is paid from the general fund. 25% is paid from solid waste, 25 from water, and 25 from sewer. So this, this budget for this department is spread out throughout the city.
So how much of it comes from the general fund, and, or is this all that's coming from the general fund, and then there's-
This is the general fund's portion of it.
Three, first-
25%.
Are you, question-
Yeah, just, which other departments have their own PIOs?
The police have one, and the city auditor and clerk. Oh, okay.
Once they have-
Sorry.
Dan Weasel.
Van Weasel has a combination of marketing and public information. They have one person that does sort of both, but that's, but so police department, the general city, and then Van Weasel has a sort of a combined marketing PIO position.
And then what is, what's the purpose of this new position?
So again, you know, Mayor Commissioners, as you saw, as you may have seen by the reports that I've sent to you regularly, the amount of, you know, requests that we're getting from the media, the amount of information that we're putting out, the communications division is also responsible for all of our social media that we put out, it's just a workload situation. One of the issues that we're running into is that when, when we have Mr. Bartolone and Ms. Thornburg, you know, when one individual is that individual, one individual has to cover, obviously, the entire city organization. And sometimes, you know, we ran into a lot of issues with illnesses where we really did not have coverage, and we had to depend on, you know, departments to kind of put out their own, you know, media information. So this is really because of the workload, because of what we're seeing in terms of a lot of projects coming online, and just keeping our citizen re-informed as to what's happening.
Commissioner Hearn, gotcha.
Yeah, I just-
And let's, let's use the clicker.
Oh, use the button.
Yeah, because it's, just so I can keep track of everyone, because I'm-
Okay. I didn't know if it was hooked up or not.
I know, I think it is, right? It is.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, the nature of this role has changed in the last 10 years drastically. People expect news immediately. When something happens, they want to know immediately. In the olden days, you'd write out press releases, you'd edit them, you'd send them. Sometimes you'd fax them, and things would, everybody would wait to get the newspaper to find out what's going on, and that's not the nature of our world these days. People want and deserve to know what's happening immediately, and so that, the sense of urgency and immediacy is, is really, really heightened in the last 10 years. And I think that creates, you know, hands-on all the time.
Commissioner, Vice Commissioner, what do you?
No, I wholeheartedly agree with that. You know, I mean, a lot of times, you know, they're relying on us for information. You know, they're not there, you know, to cover or whatever, so I totally agree with what Commissioner Koch just made it. So, you know-
Do you have more?
No. No.
Oh, Commissioner Albert.
Just really quickly, you just explained this, but it didn't clarify it for me. The amount of money that we have listed here under the PIO office is only 25% of the entire PIO budget? Or general fund pays 25% of this 320?
That is the whole budget, but you look at the revenues and you see 221,000 going out. That is, or coming in, that is from the other funds, the solid waste, the water, and the sewer.
Okay, so this is the entire budget.
The whole budget is budgeted in the general fund, but the other funds are contributing.
All right, that's why I wanted to make sure I didn't think that this budget was like four times the amount.
So tell me about that. It says here it's two full-time positions, but we know that there are definitely more than two full-time PIOs in the city.
This is just the PIO, Ms. Thornburg and Mr. Bartolone. The other ones are paid out of their own departments.
Okay, so...
Yeah, so the police department, in the previous slide, they are funding for their, you know, for their own as well as the Van Wiesel has their own.
Back to her question. This isn't the full budget?
This is, well, again, we don't have a combined public information office. So again, if you want to see what the Van Wiesel has for public information, if you want to see what the police department has for public information, just add those numbers to these. But they function independently of what Ms. Thornburg and Mr. Bartolone do. They cover all of the other departments except for the Van Wiesel and the police department.
And you bring up a great, a great point, which is, we've discussed in the past the fact that many of the, it makes it difficult to budget primarily, but when different departments have their own PIOs, and let's say that four of them have different PIOs. And then we talk about the police department having its own finance department, separate from our finance department, which is a separate charge. I'd be, I'd venture out to say that they probably have a portion of the city attorneys in there and budgeted into the police. They have their own purchasing, their own finance, their own HR, their own procurement, separate from the departments that we already have in the city. Are there any efforts to consolidate that or make that a little bit easier so that we don't have sub-sub-departments? Which makes it very difficult to budget as a commission, I believe.
Yes, and so again, you know, Mayor, I think you brought up last budget discussions, and I know staff has been working on the, and looking at how we can consolidate some of the responsibilities that the police department has as well as other city, the other city departments. SPD doesn't really have their own HR. We actually provide the services for them. Now, they do the recruitment, but again, the actual, you know, recruitment information in terms of, you know, putting out the ads for the police department that's done through HR. Financial administration, yes, they have their own financial administration services. But again, because of their criminal justice responsibilities and requirements, it's necessary for them to have someone on-site to be able to immediately respond to that, to those issues. IT, again, because of the criminal justice requirements related to the police department and the need for a lot of the information to be...
When you say criminal justice, so I'm gonna let you finish, but when you say criminal justice requirements, you're not talking about a law, you're talking about this thing that we, this policy we just made up internally?
No, 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 I am talking about the requirements for them to continue their certification. A lot of the criminal justice requirements are put forward by the federal government and also by FDLE, the federal Department of Law Enforcement. And I can have, you know, probably Deputy City Manager Robinson or the chief speak a little bit to some of those requirements and why they need on-premises support for some of those things.
Because it's my understanding that there's a way to separate between actual data and infrastructure. And we can share infrastructure, but we don't not have to share data. And it just hasn't been done. And are we saying that prior to 2014 or 15, whenever, we made the change and gave the police department its own IT, that we were not compliant with federal law? Is that what we're saying?
So they, we have never separated the IT department, they've always had their own IT department. We do share infrastructure, so a lot of the on-premises hardware that the police department has share redundancy with our IT department here. Obviously, there are servers that are separate. And again, you know, that is because of the criminal justice requirements for that.
And where can we see this? Where, is there a sheet in here of this book that says half paid by police, half paid by general, you know, although it all comes out of the general fund, but does it say it? Does it show where we are splitting this cost, these redundancies at all?
So again, it's all in the general fund, but we can separate out, you know, Mayor, if you want to see it separately, how much is allocated to the police department, how much is allocated to what we have on premises here?
So I guess, so back to my original question, have we, have we made any efforts to consolidate any of these?
The only consolidation we have is the hardware and the infrastructure. So we provide, and I don't want to separate the police department from the rest of the city because it's all the city, phone services, access to the internet, email. All of that is shared with the police department. When you come to some of the information that is informational, that is shared between, let's say, the federal government, FDLE, the sheriff's office, some of that is, you know, preempted from being shared across our network. And, you know, Mr. Robinson, I don't know if you can share a bit more?
There are additional safety concerns relative to information sharing that require a higher, a higher level of vetting of both personnel and systems over and above what our current IT, city IT has, where the police department has additional layers of security to ensure that information that is available to the police department is not shared, those outside of the area that CIGIS and FDLE allow for. So I can, we can, Criminal Justice Information System, which is a division of the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, as well as FBI, best practices. So we can get into a further conversation about why those firewalls are put in place. However, I can tell you that we have had conversations between our IT department and the police department to see if there was any nexuses that we could work on moving forward. It's not just as simple as cutting a cord and moving those things in one way or another. And if it's not done appropriately, it can create significant issues if it is done in a rushed fashion. So we are having those conversations, so we'll continue to look at those for you, sir.
And that's IT and then, but, I mean, we, there are significant, like property management is one. Our facilities management is two separate sub-departments, two separate sort of salaries when it could be consolidated. Same with procurement, you know, you have the Van Wiesel issuing its own RFPs. Same with the police, and same with us. I guess we don't, we shouldn't have separate distinctions unless there's a, there's a good reason to, between the rest, the city and individual sub-departments. And I, you know, I just, I'm curious what everyone thinks about that, but I, you know, I, it only makes sense to me, but I could be wrong. Commissioner Albert?
Mayor, let me just correct something on the record. Any procurement issue goes through our procurement department. Even though the RFP may come out of the police department or the Van Wiesel, it still goes through our procurement department. So again, I just want to make sure that, you know, any kind of personnel issues, any type of processing issues always comes through the relevant department, you know, that is, that is responsible for that. So when you talk about financial administration, yes, they do have, you know, two individuals in their financial administration division. However, you know, it is... How many, where they...
How many people are in finance in the police department?
I think they have like Ms. Meadows, and I know they have some payroll individuals.
What's that number? I believe the number's closer to like 10.
But HR, procurement, you know, property management, you know, again, we still handle that. Now, they have their own janitorial services, but again, you know, all of these are paid out of the general fund.
Vehicles. Vehicles.
Yeah. So, what, so there is, there are no other ways, no other opportunities when it comes to consolidation? Because we've tried them all or, or there are?
We are looking, and, you know, whenever we see the opportunities to consolidate responsibilities, you know, we, you know, we will make those changes or we do make those changes.
Because we've been having this discussion for a long time, over a year. And my understanding was that some proposals will be brought forward during our budget workshops to talk about this very concept. Do we have any of those concepts proposed?
So for example, the Van Wiesel, you know, they have their own financial individual. When Mr. Besic came over to the financial administration department, those responsibilities came to the finance. So, you know, they're handling, you know, the Van Wiesel financial administration. As Mr. Robinson mentioned, you know, we did take a look at the IT. And, you know, we looked, and we'll continue to look at how we can consolidate some of those responsibilities. Again, HR functions, we already handled that. Procurement functions, we already handled those sorts of things. One of the things that I know Ms. Strickland is working on, and, you know, this will be sort of a slow crawl, is how can we better consolidate some of our payroll responsibilities and also accounting responsibilities? So we are looking at that, but again, you know, Mayor, you know, our hope is that we can, you know, do it in a deliberate manner and not just rush into making these changes.
Okay, and just for the sake of argument, what, can we, can we just, so I can have one page with everything we spent on PIOs, what are the other costs of PIOs in the city? So for, I know 340 is for, for just the public information office, but then what are, what are the costs for the sub-offices that we have? For example, the police, how much?
We can gather that together for you.
Okay.
I can't tell you right now, but I can gather the information for you.
Yeah, please, and just, that's for everything. So I don't have to ask it at every department, just, I'd like to see...
I would like to point out that in your book, under the summary of all funds, it's called summary of all funds, and it's the last few pages of the book, like 22 and 23, 24, it gives you every position that is in that department. We were able to take a look at SPD, and there are six finance-type positions in that department.
Okay, that's, but I'll, before tomorrow, you think I can get something?
We can do that.
Thank you. All right, any more questions, Commissioner Albert?
I'm gonna kind of go in the opposite direction. I mean, I think things that make sense should be combined, but I think there are a lot of reasons why certain departments should have their own. I think it's much cleaner to be able to account for this is attributable to the police department, these expenses, these expenses are attributable to the Van Wiesel. And if you don't have the Van Wiesel, then you don't, you know, need that person. Plus, their public information needs or other needs are different. So even if you combine them all, you'd still have to have somebody to beat a specialist on doing public information for the Van Wiesel, somebody to be a specialist to do the police department. So I don't, I'm not in agreement with your request to, you know, if it makes sense to consolidate, but I think a lot of things don't.
All right. Commissioner, anybody else? All right, moving on.
Next slide.
Okay, our next slide is for human resources, and that's on tab six. And the revenues went up 12.7%, and the expenditures went down 8.9%. There are 11 positions in this department. You can see that their request for capital went down, and their increases, again, primarily in operating cost. Any questions?
Commissioner Herrgatch.
Thank you. So in our tab, on page one, it says 2022, 10.5, and then 2023, 11. That's shifting. Got it, yes, thank you. That will save a lot of questions.
I'm gonna try to point out every time there's a new position in these budgets.
And I know that it says, has here the budget issues for 2023, and there's zero. But I was just curious about why that number would change without a budget issue. I wasn't sure what that was due to.
They're shifting the person within their department.
Thank you.
And what, what do we attribute the decrease in capital expenditures? Is that because of the program, the software that we paid for?
I believe that we had some cameras in that for the previous year, and then we decided that we didn't want to do that. I'll ask Ms. Mason to come down and explain.
I have a question while we're waiting.
Commissioner Herrgatch.
And just throughout, I think I have this like every year, the same question about what is special services? That number just seems to sometimes go up drastically or down drastically. And I don't know if that's like a catch-all place or what that means.
It is somewhat, it's like, for example, our auditors, that's a special service.
Okay.
Or a service-oriented expense that we have.
So if that department is audited that year, then that will be an added special services expense that would not have been reflected the year before?
We have the audit fees in the unclassified so that it's spread out for everybody.
Can you, can you speak to the increase in the budgeted request for 68,000 on the FRS? Regular contribution?
Ms. Mason, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good morning, Stacy Mason, HR Director. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for going through all the work you did on these budgets. I believe the question was on capital, the original question. We do have to renew our computers for our staff. So when they are out of warranty, we do it about every three to four years. We had a number of staff we had to replace computers, so that was past capital. Going forward, I think that's like 7,665 roughly. So I've got a few more computers I'll have to replace. As we're trying to do it in staged cycles, so we don't have to purchase a lot at one time.
And the special services?
In special services, as Ms. Strickland said, is generally for paying for vendor fees or consultant fees.
Okay.
So as we have to pay for consultants or vendors under our HR purview, we would pay it out of that line item.
And then, when it comes to FRS regular contributions, line item 230, it went from 24,000 to 68,000, which is over...
The impact of the increase from the state legislation would rise our rates. So if we get that increase in FRS, we have to increase that. As we are hiring new staff in HR, and some of the staff with longer service exit, we're no longer in the pension plan, we don't have that option.
This is for the match?
Yes, the contribution into FRS for employees.
And we know that that's a, that's a concrete number, we know that that is going to be 68,000, or is this an estimate?
I would have to defer to Kelly, I believe it's...
It's based on the employees that she has. So her current employees that are there may be in the pension plan, but we have to assume that they will move, that if they leave, the new employees will automatically be enrolled in FRS. So that's why we have a budget for FRS.
And then, okay, and then we've attributed, we attributed, 21, we had, we spent $24,000 in legal in 2022, but we budgeted 150. And then now we're budgeting 165,000. Do we anticipate that we're going to spend more money on legal?
I will say, I hope we do not, but the reason I did increase it is we, as Ms. Strickland had mentioned at the top of the conversation, is we're working with both unions we have right now in negotiations. So I use legal support for both of those negotiations in different ways, and we...
What do you mean by legal support?
Either at the table in negotiations or reviewing contracts.
Our city attorney's office is what you're talking about?
A portion could be paid out of that or external attorney support with Mr. Fornay's support to do that. So if there's external support that we use for attorneys, then their fees would be paid out of that additionally.
Yeah, but not Mr. Fornay's attorney, attorney's fees?
Yes.
Would they be paid out of that too?
Yes, a portion of that, so...
In addition to Mr. Fornay's budget proposal that he presented to, that's going to be approved here?
Any uses that we have under HR, if we get fees or billing from the city attorney's office, a portion of it would be paid from that line item.
And the same happens with a separate budgeted item for legal in the other departments as well?
Yes.
On top of what the city attorney's budget presented to the city?
So when you get to, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, when you get to the city attorney's budget, you will see line items for different departments that, you know, he charges. So it... So, it's kind of like double counting. But, you know, he has a separate budget, and you'll see in his budget when we get to it, different line items for what he charges or he anticipates to charge, different departments for the services he provides. The city attorney gets a retainer, which, you know, I mean, it's a minor amount, but everything else he charges for throughout the organization.
And then I just wanted to just point something out, which is, I believe it's something that the commission would need to address, if not this commission, the next commission. But it is a problem, not just here at this city, but in every city and nationally. And it's the fact that health, like, just health insurance in general is rising at twice the rate of inflation, which is unsustainable. We're looking here, medical and dental went up over 10%. We're looking at retirement city portion 20-plus percent. You know, just something to be aware of, that it's a big problem. Commissioner Ankrach?
I don't have a question.
Oh, I saw your name on there.
Oh.
All right. If no more questions, thank you so much. Moving on.
Our next slide is for Development Services. This is on Tab 7. As I mentioned previously, we did have an increase in this department, and that was for the reallocation of personnel costs to the Accurate Fund, whether it be the Building Fund or the General Fund. This department has also requested an administrative specialist position for the newly created Vacation Rental Program. There are 28.55 positions that are budgeted in Development Services for the fiscal year '23. And I would ask if Ms. Panica could come down and give you a little bit more information about the Vacation Rental Program.
For the record, Lucia Panica, Director of Development Services. This slide is just to give you an idea of how the program is actually going in terms of fees that we are collecting and cost that it's costing us. Currently, the fee for a new registration is $250. That's biannual. There is a biannual renewal fee of $150. There's also a reinspection fee of $50, a transfer ownership fee of $100. So, there's other additional fees that may come up, a late fee of $100 as well. The revenues that we have received to date are $29,702, and that accounts for about 105 vacation rentals. We have had quite a few that have been late, so there's an additional $100 fee, some that have had reinspection fees, et cetera. The expected annual fee to be collected is, or additional fee, excuse me, is $9,500, and that is for 25 vacation rentals that we anticipate are still out there, including the $100 late fee that they would be due. I also estimated about 15 $50 reinspection fees in that number, just because that's kind of what we've been seeing lately. So, the total expected revenue for this year is $39,202, and this is only for the barrier islands, for the vacation rentals that are there non-owner occupied. The estimated revenue for Year 2, since we won't have these, the 130 vacation rentals having to renew, the revenue, expected revenue for Year 2 would be for any new vacation rentals. So, that would be approximately $5,500. And that's assuming that we get 20 new vacation rentals and approximately maybe 10 reinspection fees within that. The total estimated revenue for Year 3, again, that would be the 130 vacation rentals from Year 1, with a $150 fee would be approximately $19,500. So, that is the revenue that we expect for the expenditures. We have a contract with Granicus for our software, and that's an annual fee of $50,466. That's for the first three years, so hopefully it won't increase too much more. Staff salary is approximately $70,519. So, the total expected yearly expenditures for this program is about $120,985. And then the rest of the slide here, just to give you kind of an idea from what we've seen, there's an average charge per night for these vacation rentals in the barrier island of $635. So, that would be approximately an average income of $213,360. So, that's kind of just to give you an idea of what these rentals are charging per night. We did look at a couple of other jurisdictions to look at their fees. If that is something that we bring back, we kind of wanted to see how we were doing compared to other jurisdictions that have this program. And we are pretty low compared to other jurisdictions. Some of them have annual fees, some of them base it on per rooms. So, there's kind of a variety, and we can look at that more if we're called to do that.
Mayor and Commissioners, the reason I bring this to attention is that the program is not paying for itself. The General Fund is subsidizing the vacation rentals. As Ms. Panica mentioned, you know, each vacation rental, just on a one night, is bringing in almost $213,000. So, multiply that by, how many vacation rentals do we have? 140 something?
130.
130. My, you know, request for the commission is to reconsider that ordinance and really have the program pay for itself. We can still not charge a full amount and still, you know, cover our costs. But again, the vacation rentals that are making millions of dollars, if you multiply the $213,000 by 144, it really speaks to the need to revisit this ordinance and have the program pay for itself, at least, is what we're asking the commission to consider. So, this is just a snapshot of what is going on, especially with the amount of money that's being made on the barrier islands by vacation rentals.
So, how do we get to the number of $635 as a charge per night?
That's just an average that we took. Our software program can basically pull the ads from each vacation rental in the barrier islands, and we took that, it just took the average of all the nightly rentals.
So, the good thing about Granicus, which we have a contract with, is that they actually are doing all of the spot checks or the checks on the ads. And so, Ms. Panica and her team are able to get with Granicus and pull down what the average is per night.
And that's also how we know that there's approximately 25 more out there. We're now 20, but...
So, you're going from 26 employees to 28 and a half?
So, there was some, as Ms. Strickland mentioned earlier, there was some reallocation that we had to do. There's a request for one additional employee, one additional staff member. But there was some reallocation that we had to do from the Building Fund to Development Services General Fund. So, I'm increasing my staff by one.
Okay, you're increasing your staff by one. And because it seems like there was a lot of reallocation, because the salaries went, you know, salaries went from $328,000, $801,000 is what we're budgeting, which is over 100% increase. And we're looking at medical and dental, you're going from 50... I mean, last, 22 actual was $7,000, even though we budgeted 55. So, we budgeted $55,000, we actually spent $7,000. And now, for the '23 budget, we're trying to open more than double that at $126,451. Did we feel there was a need to do that?
So, again, Mayor and Commissioners, you know, one of the things that we mentioned is, you know, we have a Florida statute that basically says that, you know, the individuals who are being paid by the Building Fund have to be, you know, individuals that are responsible for enforcing the building, you know, the building code. And so, again, Ms. Panica and her team, you know, took a look, you know, we basically had, you know, under the advisement of the city attorney's office, take a look at those specific individuals that should fall under the Building Fund. And there were a number of individuals who were being paid previously by the Building Fund that we had to move to the General Fund in order to comply with that Florida statute, so we don't get in trouble with what...
And I get that, but there's so many of these line items just all throughout this report. For example, you know, we've looked at training, you know, training. We budgeted $12,940, we spent $3,459. Even though we budgeted $13,000 essentially, we're still moving that up to $16,000, even though we budget, we actually spent $3,459, which I, I mean, I can understand, I can understand your wanting to be able to, you know, just have discretionary funds at some point in the future, but is this really the best way to go about it?
So, Mayor and Commissioners, remember, the previous budgets were during COVID, the COVID period. And again, you know, a lot of, you know, departments, you know, even though their budgets were funded for travel, did not travel. You'll see that throughout departments. And so, one of the things that I encourage a lot of departments and their staff is to travel, is to, you know, go to conferences, you know, go to training. And so, what you see here is that, you know, directive to departments to start that process back up again. Ms. Panica, you know, so?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one more thing on the training specifically. So, we had, in 2022, we had, well, we didn't have a general manager. So, that was, you know, a position that usually does some travel and training. We were down about two development review planners, and they also have to do training and keep up their certifications and things like that, too. So, not only were we affected by COVID, but staff too. We just weren't utilizing that money.
I'd also like to point out that in personnel, we have $89,000 budgeted for FRS that we didn't have last year.
Yeah, I saw that, too. Commissioner Brody?
You mentioned the host-occupied rentals are not a part of that? That's what I'm assuming you were saying? Okay. And Mr. Fournier, when you, when you, we redid the host-occupied rentals, I don't remember, did that include detached accessory dwelling units or not?
Well, not specifically, but I think that would be included if there's a host on site that would be considered, it's not considered a vacation rental, it's not transient lodging.
Okay.
Because you'd have someone living there.
Okay, is that how you understand it?
Yes, yeah, as long as someone's living there, it doesn't matter if they're renting a room inside their house or an accessory dwelling unit.
Side note, I have had a couple instances where people have been stopped or cited for renting a accessory dwelling unit in the city. So, I want to get that cleared up.
Yeah, so, you're probably referring to some letters that we sent out to the mainland, which Granicus, our software program, wasn't able to distinguish between owner occupied versus a vacation rental. We were basically just looking at the number of nights that they were, that they had on their ads. So, now, if we do that again, we're going to look at each one to make sure they're not owner occupied.
So, those letters are not valid if they were sent to the mainland?
Correct, yeah, and they were just warning letters, they weren't citations. They were just kind of giving people...
Don't you think we should follow up with those people so that they can know our position?
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly look back and see who we mailed it to. There was about 450 of those letters that we sent out. But they were kind of warning letters, just basically letting people know that we have the seven-day, seven-night rental requirement.
And Commissioner, one of the things that we're doing as well is the future letters, when they do go out, there will be an opportunity for the individual, the owner, to contact us to let us know that they are, you know, host occupied. So, because Granicus has now that we put...
Okay, but you got a lot of people out there that think that they can't rent their host-occupied rental now?
We can certainly go back and look at those, the letters that we did send out, and follow up with another letter.
I think that would be prudent and just, I mean, in good faith. We don't want to send false information out and not correct it. People are making decisions based on that. It's affecting their own household budgets.
Correct, yeah, and the only thing that that letter said basically was a seven-day, seven-night rule. We didn't say you can't rent it at all.
But that doesn't apply to host-occupied rentals, from what I remember?
Correct, yeah, so we'll have to go back and take a look at who we sent those letters to and try to follow up with them.
Okay, can you follow up with that issue just personally?
All right, other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
I'd like to ask, if it's possible, if we could take a five-minute break right now?
Let's take a five-minute break. We'll be back here at 10:51.
So special revenue, so we can do that tomorrow.
Welcome back, everyone. Please have a seat.
Half of the day. Really? Wow.
Yeah. Felt like such a fun, time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah.
We have 10 more slides left and then we can all-
Wow, no kidding.
Enjoy the rest of our day. Yeah, we're going to finish early? Weird. So, yeah. It's 10:53, two minutes, so we can resume.
Okay, you ready? Okay, this next slide is my department, Financial Administration. You can find it on tab eight. We have 21.7 positions that are budgeted in this department. We are requesting an additional accounts payable specialist. With the growth of the city over the past few years and the number of transactions that have increased, we feel that we need this. It'll add additional efficiency and accuracy to the department. Also, changes in governmental accounting standards, specifically GASB 87, which has created the need of additional accounting for leases and lease-ors, has increased our workload. Funding for this software has also been included in our capital budget. Do you have any questions about this budget?
No, I thought this one was great. It was reasonable just all across the board.
The department?
It was, no, I thought you, it was a reasonable increase where you increased. And I hope you enjoy your additional employee and have fun and crunch numbers as you do. Are there any other comments or concerns, everyone? No? All right. We're good.
Okay, the next budget we're going to take a look at is the City Auditor and Clerk's budget. And as you can see, that the increases were 7% from the prior year, or 170,000. And again, this is, there is no additional personnel that are being requested from this. We do have increases in FRS and various salary items, such as increases that we can give in the future. We put a dollar amount in there. Any questions?
I just want to say thank you for working with them, Shayla. This is great. I know you tried very hard and these are expenses that you can't, you know, there's an increase in salaries. Of course, you have to take care of your people and there's an increase in, of course, expenses and costs associated with FRS. And so with all that being said, an increase, you know, the increase from, you know, the request last, from 2.4 million to 2.6 million is reasonable. So, thank you.
And our operating costs went down, so we did try to find ways to track back there.
It is noticed. Thank you. Moving on.
Our next budget is the City Attorney's budget, and that can be found on tab 10. So in the proposed budget, 1.5 million of the cost is in the general fund. 664,000 are in other funds throughout the city. There's also other legal counsel that is included in the City Attorney's budget. Under his direction, there's 250,000, and not under his direction are 305,000. Total legal fee budget for all funds is 2.7 million. And Bob, do you want to add anything to that?
I guess all I would say is, you know, I worked with the sheet on page 186 of 494 in there. And my '21, '22 fiscal year budget for this year was, out of the general fund budget, was 1.5 million. And when I did the projections for what I would come in at this year, it was really just within a small amount either way. So the highest was 1,509, which was only 9,000 over. They said my budget was flat, so I'm just going to basically come in right on target. So when I asked the city manager, you know, if he was trying to impose any controls on increases, he just said he'd like to keep it 8% or lower to stay within inflation. So I asked for a 5% increase, which is, you can see at the last column, it's 1.575. Another, I asked for another $75,000, anticipating expenses would go up, and that's a 5% increase. So that was the increase out of the general fund. It's just 5%, which in dollars is $75,000.
I have so many questions. What rate, is it a billable rate that you do have in a contract with the city?
Yes.
It's like 250 or 240?
220, yeah, right now.
So at a rate of 220 per hour, we're saying that in 2021, it was 144,000, and 2022 was 160, and now we're going to 170,000?
I'm not sure what you're looking at.
I'm looking at, for example, drafting agreements, agreement drafting. We went from 140 to 160 to 170.
Yeah, these numbers in the general fund are sort of all fungible. They're just allocated, I have to, you know, move it around because one year something will be much higher than anticipated. As I said, this year, I'm right within a small percentage point of what was budgeted. I'm not grossly over. Some years I've been 20 or 25% over. But in those years, I can always identify, you know, what the item was or multiple items that were much higher than anticipated because of something that happened during the year. It's hard to project with what I do because it's mostly reactive to either commission assignments or external things coming in. So this year was kind of aberrational to get it so close. But next year, who knows what might happen? You know, we don't know.
And is it because the needs, the need for your services in the city are higher than in surrounding jurisdictions? Is that, would that be?
I mean, I don't know. I just know there's a lot happening in the city of Sarasota. There's a lot of assignments, there's a lot of ordinances, agreements.
We try to bring you in for everything. Like, tell us what we should eat for dinner, drop a memo. It's insane.
Sometimes.
What, if any, are there the opportunities that we have here? Like, how can we save on legal fees?
Well, I, you know, you can't control what comes in from the outside, you know, like suits.
We've been getting sued less, is that-
I think so. I think in the personal injury area especially, we've had far less suits. Some others now, you know, the ongoing litigation with Paul Thorpe Park, that's one where we do have outside counsel, but we've worked on it as well. That's winding down. That's been an expense in the past. I have talked to a firm about helping us with any Harrisat claims that might come out of the vacation rental ordinance. So far, we haven't even gotten any notices, but that's a big unknown because that could turn into a significant expense in the next fiscal year. I just, I don't know. So I'm sort of planning on it. So it's kind of hard. Another expense that was probably going to be higher than anticipated is the negotiations with Newtown Gateway for the purchase and sale agreement that will be coming back. Environmental counsel had to be engaged. I don't have extensive experience with, you know, site remediation, so I've had to hire an outside firm on that. So I think, you know, how we do say with things like that is I just engage someone from the outside that has that particular expertise rather than trying to enlarge our office staff because you could bring on so many more people with some expertise in some area that you might only need for one project. And I've just found it's more efficient, although, you know, I might add someone this year, to keep the staff a little bit smaller and then to reach out and engage outside people with a level of expertise in a particular area. And that seems to have worked. So that's kind of what I've done to try to keep the cost down. But I don't see them realistically shrinking below what they are now unless there's a lot less assignments given, a lot less need for, you know, opinions and ordinances and agreements and the sort of things that keep us busy.
Yeah, but my question is, you know, all the departments, I understand how their increases are associated with salary increases, with pension benefits, with gas, with the cost of it. But these increases, they seem to go up with inflation, but we're paying you the same rate every single year over and over.
Well, it's gone up. It's gone up over the years. I have a schedule, but it hasn't gone up much. I haven't increased it much every year. I mean, I might build one in this year. Haven't really thought about that too much yet.
We had 240,000, $400,000 in outside special counsel that we spent actual 20 to 21.
Well, let me see that. I'm not, I don't show that that was, that's what was spent. I'm projecting 145. That's on page 188, not 400.
I'm looking at 10-4. I'm looking at tab 10, last page, 4.
Last page of the packet, Bob.
In the packet.
The last page of this packet that was passed out?
Yeah. Online.
Well, that's where I was looking, and I see. I mean, well, okay, I don't see the 400,000 number on here.
Look at, look at outside special counsel, top. Look at the total at the bottom for actual 2021, 20 to 2021 was 390, 263.
Okay.
Now it's 253.
263.
Oh, 253.
No, no, I'm looking at actual fiscal year 20 to 21. I'm looking at the first column.
Right.
At the bottom, 390, 263.
Yeah, but he's proposing 253.
He is proposing 253. My question for this particular section is, does outside special counsel, all funds under the City Attorney's direction, is that separate from the outside special counsel that is after that? That is not under the attorney's direction?
Yeah, that is separate because I don't, I don't supervise, you know, the primary area that I have to know what's happening and supervise is the outside counsel that I retain to assist in litigation, like some of the things that mattered. And I, you know, going back, I would have the list of the 319, and I suspect that's when the, like I said, the Paul Thorpe suit was active. There was a lot of post judgment matters going on in that Buck Leiter suit. I don't know when that was resolved, but there was issues. So I could account for what that was. I just haven't done that because that was a prior past fiscal year, so I couldn't tell you what was, what that was composed of, but I could.
And then I see things that are not under your direction, but I see legal, legal public defender. We paid for a public defender's fee. Under what circumstances do we pay for indigent services for someone else?
There's a contract that we have that's pretty simple, and it's not much per case, but, you know, occasionally we, it's not significant, but we do, we do have, get billed for that. And again, that's not under my supervision.
Okay.
When someone gets appointed.
For city ordinances, right? Criminal city ordinances.
Commissioner Ringer, go.
Mr. Fournier, we have had a couple of conversations about a lease or real estate expert. Is that something that is being pursued or part of your budget here?
Well, not at the current time, not to have one person solely responsible. I think, you know, when we've talked, I've said it sort of depends on the subject matter of the particular lease or agreement at hand as to who might be responsible for reviewing. And it's kind of difficult to say, you know, one person is going to be responsible for every single document, no matter what the subject matter of the document. But certainly if someone new were to be hired or added to staff, that would be a consideration of someone with the ability to review.
Or is that planned for in the outside special counsel?
If necessary, like, for example, the purchase and sale agreement for the Marion Anderson Brownfield would be a good example because that's turning out to be a little bit more complex than I had anticipated. So I'm glad that I retained environmental counsel.
Right, and I, you know, it's a recommendation that this area continue to be, you know, looked at as far as retaining experts in those areas. It's my recommendation.
Okay, and we can do that. But my point was that for next year, that I wasn't proposing a significant change in the general fund budget. And the second page from the revenue funds, that's all coordinated with the other departments or funds that use the services. So those are the bottom line numbers on the slide for everything combined.
Third time?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor, what do you think?
Nothing, but nothing, you know, that important. But just speaking to Commissioner Kottas' point, I proposed that, you know, some time ago during the commission meeting about, you know, seeking expertise in that area.
I think we have to be aware when we need it, we have to go get it. If there is some particular topic that, you know, the more generalized experience of the people in my office, it's warranted to find somebody with a particular level of expertise in another area, that's what we have to do. But of course, that does come at a cost, so.
Commissioner Kottas, you have another?
Just one more question. So would that, would that, to be able to address that, would that be something that could be as simple as additional training or additional education or additional certification in a certain area for somebody who is already part of the staff, your staff?
Well, possibly. I mean, you're just talking about contracts and agreements in general, though. Am I right about that? And then some of what I think, some of this concern has definitely, I think, have to do with some matters that I would consider general policy matters that perhaps the city manager's recommendation would be weighted more heavily than mine. For example, like on a lease, the amount that the commission would accept in a lease payment. You know, you might have a nonprofit tenant or something and you want to give them a good deal, so to speak, on the rent. Well, that's lawful. I mean, I wouldn't tell you that you couldn't do it. Now, whether you should do it or whether what the amount was, that may be more of a management question, an administrative question than a legal question. So I think there's some overlap there between the legal concerns and the manager's concerns.
Agreed.
And again, Commissioner, to the City Attorney's point, you know, one of the things that I think I may have shared recently, you know, we do have continuing services contracts with economic analyst type firms. And again, and I think this is a really good exercise to do is that when we do get a lease or renewal of the lease, is to really have an outside party take a look at it to see if it's benefiting the city. And so we'll be starting to engage, you know, those companies to take a look at any lease that we have.
That's good. Thank you.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor, what do you think?
Oh, no, so I just wanted to ask a question. Is that like, like an owner's rep or something like that for the city? Or whatever, to look over contracts and make sure that they're, you know?
Do we receive billing statements?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I've never seen one. I'd, you know, at your convenience, I think the commissioner would be.
I have, I generate a detailed one and then a more summary one, and I send the summary one. But if there's questions, I have the more detailed one.
I don't think I've seen it.
Because I don't, I don't want to send over, you know, something with all the descriptions, but I have that.
So it comes to us, Mr. Mayor. And again, if the commission would love to see it, you know, we get it monthly. And so we do review it to make sure that it lines up with what we've asked the City Attorney's office to do. So again, if you need copies of that, we even want to-
Has there ever been a time when you talked to the City Attorney and like, hey, I think this is wrong, you should redo this?
You know, usually, you know, we can usually reconcile everything when we go over the budget. And we, and the City Attorney's been very cooperative that, you know, when we take a look at an item and we say to, you know, Mr. Fournier, hey, you know, you know, should, number one, should this be allocated to this line item or should it be reduced? And he's worked, you know, he's gone back and take a look at his budget and come, you know, sometimes come back with a reduction in terms of, you know-
How many times would you say that's happened?
Um, not often, but again, we have staff, I don't know, Ms. Strickland, how many times, your staff?
We, we work with him on the coding of items, so if there's an item that doesn't look like it's going to the right spot, or it's being overcharged, usually you pick out the phone, give him a call, and realize, oh, that should be coded somewhere else, so, to that. We have talked to him several times.
Okay, thank you. One more question, and we can move on to the next section.
The next slide is planning, and this department includes sustainability, which is funded fifty percent from water and sewer and fifty-six percent from solid waste, and also includes economic development. There are twelve positions in this department. There were previously two more, fourteen, and two of those positions were moved to engineering. It was a shuffle, so not an increase or a decrease, but moving it to a different department. The, the budget has gone down overall, forty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Are there any questions that you'd like to ask about planning?
Yes, after, Commissioner Hargit.
Yes. On page eleven-six, special services, this is one of those ones, again, where it, it just, it jumps out at you that, or it just jumps out that twenty twenty-two actual special services was four thousand, and it's being proposed at eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-five. Just curious what that might be.
Do we know? Comprehensive plan, Minico, comprehensive plan?
Thank you.
Good morning, Steve Kovar, planning director, for the record. Yeah, for special services, we actually have several things that are part of that overall cost. First is a very small piece is the historic preservation plaques, bronze plaques that we put out on sites. We also do some meeting transcription, which is only about nine thousand. And then the remainder is for special requests, and so this year, we are looking into 3D modeling for projects and applications as they come in. We actually were looking at this late last year, but the, the market and the, the market has just changed so much, and the capabilities of different firms have changed so much. Last year, there were only one or two companies that could do it. Now there are seven, eight, nine companies that we think can do it. And so what we want to do is explore, you know, with these funds, the actual 3D modeling of projects as they come in. There are different approaches to doing it. What we're thinking is that maybe we hire an outside contractor to start us off and get us going down this path, and then eventually training our staff so that they can, we can do it in-house, and we won't need assistance from an outside contractor.
May I?
Yeah.
All right, well, that's very interesting. Is there any way we can pull that number out of special services? I think it's really a quite important project to, to do and deserving of funding and attention, I believe. So, you know, it, it's.
It's simply a coding mechanism for accounting for us to know where to classify it, and that's how we report it in financial statements.
Okay.
Just because it's, you know, it's definitely something that's really valuable for the community to see a proposed project in the actual environment where it's being proposed. And I can't imagine that that is something, the demand for something like that is going to go away. I think it's only going to increase. So I would be very interested in that. And
then the meeting transcripts, is that where all of our meeting transcripts are in, special services?
For different departments, yes. Except, well.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I wouldn't speak to the city ordinance, but for different departments, it will be in special services.
Okay. Okay, okay, I understand. And then the historic preservation plaques as well. So that comes out of the special services, the plaque?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And you're talking about the big bronze ones?
Yeah, these are the ones that we.
Or the smaller ones?
These are the ones that, they vary in size, but these are the ones that we put out, you know, when a, when a, when a house or building is designated, we put them out there on the sites.
I see, okay. Okay.
So Commissioner, to tell you, special services, there's a lot of miscellaneous things that go in this account, because there's no other account that classifies it any better. So it kind of sticks out. As you have pointed out, you know, special services, what is that? So that's where things that we can't find a place anywhere else to code them go.
Okay, so I should just supplement the word for special services, miscellaneous?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Because it does vary and goes up and down. And then a lot of the numbers in the staff that move around in here is shifting and not.
Right.
Got it. All right. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Albert.
I don't, I don't really have a question. I just want to just make a comment in support of the 3D imaging as well. I also think it would be really useful in terms of if we're doing zoning changes or comp plan changes, to be able to show what that would actually be. And I think, I, I think it's important that we fund that and look at doing that. Obviously, once we know what the cost is, but I still think it's reasonable.
That's really a great point. It's not just for projects. As we, as we move forward with some of our, our zoning initiatives, it would really be helpful to have three-dimensional graphics as well for that. It's a good point.
Vice Mayor Patey?
Again, a comment, you know, I totally concur with Commissioner Albert and Commissioner Kottz regarding making that a priority. In, in the position regarding economic development, Newtown, that's accounted for in this?
Correct, yes, it is.
Okay. Was there another position in that as well? Was it two or just one?
In the economic development department, it's two positions. Mr. Kovar, if you can go ahead and speak briefly to that.
Yes, yes. We currently are hiring for a, an economic development manager. We're actually going through the interview process right now, and then we've had some good candidates interviewed already, so we're hoping we'll have that individual in place either next month or later into September. And then we also have a, well, we have a redevelopment manager position, which, which right now, I, I, I'd like to hold off on that, wait until the manager comes in, really gets a clear picture as to what we want to do from an economic development standpoint. We really are going to be going, and I think in a much different direction, when all is said and done, not only covering Newtown, but the entire city when it comes to promoting economic development for the city.
I think that's a great strategy, you know, wait until you get the manager, and then move forward from there.
Commissioner Hargit.
One more question. Mr. Brown, so this year, there, there was a bill that was proposed that didn't go forward, but I, I imagine it'll come back again about doing an economic study. Every time we have an amendment to an ordinance or a new ordinance, you have to do an economic study of the impact. Is that part of this plan for this person, or there's this, would this come out of another department?
So what Commissioner Hargit has mentioned, and is that, that bill that the governor vetoed that basically said that any ordinance that's created by a municipality, if it impacted businesses by a certain percent, you had to do an economic impact study. Again, that bill was not passed. We don't anticipate, you know, having to take on that responsibility, but if, you know, that's something we probably have to work with the city attorney's office with, with, with planning, that if this, if there is such a bill in the future, if it does come back, how do we handle doing those types of ordinances? It's something we'd have to discuss with the commission, because there, there will be an impact on staff in terms of resources every time we do an ordinance, and there's an impact to businesses.
Right, and it's not every time we do an ordinance, it's also every time we even amend an ordinance.
Correct.
So I, I think it's something we should anticipate coming back and eventually having to grapple with something like that. And it just, I'm not sure that it's not even such a bad practice for us to even, maybe not to the extent that was proposed, but at some sort of extent to understand the economic impact, what that would look like, what that would cost, so that we can be prepared for something like that. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about that, but.
Again, I would caution the commission, because again, we do so many ordinances, whether it's a zoning change, whether it's a court amendment, I mean, so every ordinance, you know, we'll have to take a look at to see, and again, do an analysis to see if it impacts a business by more than fifteen percent. You, I, I would venture to guess that, you know, we would probably need, you know, and again, you know, Mr. Fornia, you can weigh in, we'll probably need, you know, maybe outside, outside consultant or someone to be able to take a look at all those ordinances, just to see if it, if it trips that fifteen percent, and then, you know, make a determination as to whether we need to move forward with that ordinance or not.
Right. So my, my request is not necessarily for us to actually create that position and fund it and do it and go forward with it, is to look at the big picture of, should we be required to do this, how would it impact us? How many ordinances or amend, how many ordinances or amendments to ordinances do we have per year? How many would be easy ones to say, no, 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 and there are ten that would require a real detailed study? And then what that would look like? Not actually do it, but actually know what we might be in for, should this go forward, be proposed again and go forward, just to, to know what we're, we should be prepared for. As a municipality, what would that look like for us? It could even be helpful for us, from an analysis point of view, should this come back again, which I anticipate it will, that when we go to Tallahassee and we talk to our delegation and other legislators to say to them, this is the impact to our municipality of something like this. So we would ask that you not require it, or, so that we have something in hand.
So, so again, Commissioner, you're asking us to do that now. So again, even if we do that now, even in anticipation of doing it when the bill, it still takes resources. So if you're saying to us, go ahead and start that analysis with every ordinance or amendment to an ordinance that comes.
No, 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 I'm not saying to, to look at every ordinance and every amendment to every ordinance. I'm saying, could we look at the big picture, the global picture of that?
I, I don't know how to do that without taking a look at every ordinance.
Yeah, and we, we also can't take any action here today, so it wouldn't, you know, it's something to bring up probably at a, at a future meeting.
Right. Just putting it out there.
Thank you. Commissioner Brody.
Just going to comment on that. The commission can always do that when it's considering an ordinance, ordinance by ordinance. We can always say, let's, you know, let's get someone to figure out the economic impact of that, or of this change, or of this new ordinance, before we implement it. So keep that in mind.
Thank you.
And then two, I, yeah, well, I, I don't know, when the governor vetoes legislation, it usually kills it for at least a little while, as opposed to it not passing the legislature. I just don't think the legislators waste their time with those, from what I can recall. But I think, you know, it's a good exercise for us to keep in mind, just in general, how our ordinances affect the bottom line of our community, good and bad.
Mr. Kovar, I have some questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you for keeping your full-time positions at a, at a reasonable level. Thank you for keeping your budget at a reasonable level. Where, where do these grants come from? Grants and aid as expenses, it went from thirty-five to forty to fifty. What are we spending money on?
Uh, yeah, those are just, most of that is the neighborhood grant program.
We're just increasing it every year?
Which we increased it to fifty. It's, it's such a popular program right now, and we get more requests than we actually can fulfill.
When, when are we going to not increase it? Have we thought of, have we thought of a cap?
Well, we didn't, we didn't increase it last year. We just thought this year, since there's such a demand, we thought we'd pump it up to, to fifty.
Just so you know, I'm going to say the same concern I had last year. I spoke to my neighborhood association, which I am not a member of, it's a voluntary one, but I asked them, have you received any information about this? And they have not. Just putting that out there, just because I, you know, we, something for you to think about. The operating expenditures went up, and that, what does that do to?
Well, I mean, that's really getting down to the details here.
In twenty-one, you spent seventy-five thousand dollars, and so for twenty-three, you're requesting two hundred and one thousand dollars.
Right, so operating expenditures, it's obviously some of your generic items such as office supplies. We are looking to potentially do a citizens academy this year that does cost travel and training, advertising. We've got a lot of ordinances and major initiatives that are going to be coming up this upcoming year, so, and then we're going to have to advertise those. You know, just to give you an idea, just for the, the comp plan changes that we were proposing, we had to send out five thousand, six hundred and eighty-two mailings three times to, to notify the property owners that were impacted by those initiatives. So obviously, that.
And what was, what were the circumstances that made it, you needed to do it three times? What, what was, why was that the requirement?
City commission, community workshop, and planning board.
Okay.
Okay. And then also, you know, a large portion adds special services, which we just discussed.
I don't think.
I don't know. I mean, there's, there's computer hardware, software, it's really pretty much just our general, general expenses.
So does the business development manager, or I'm guessing it was that I saw here, economic development division of the, of planning department, how many employees do we have in that? We have two?
Correct.
Okay. Because I thought that, that, that position was changed over into the government relations position. Okay. There's an inter-fund transfer in eleven-three, second line over there on revenue is, where's that from? Do we know? I mean, that might be a Kelly question.
That's coming from the CRA. The CRA is helping to support any operating expenses.
Now, you, you move over to eleven-four, the next page over, I don't see an inter-fund transfer for that, which is the one that is supposed to be funded by, half by utilities.
What you do see are revenues, and you can see the revenue that are coming in of a hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Hundred and thirty-four thousand. That is other internal services?
That is from the water and sewer fund and solid waste.
Okay, and that is just for salary?
That's for the cost of sustainability. They, they are paying for that program.
those are all my questions for that. Thank you, Mr. Kovar. Mr. Brody, did you want to, Mr. Brody, do you want to comment further? I saw your name on here.
I did want to say something. I think I was, I think I got it answered.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Our next department that we'll take a look at is streets and highways, and it's on tab twelve of your book. There are twenty-five point forty-eight full-time positions in this department. There are five that are being requested in the fiscal year twenty-three budget, and those are one street lighting maintenance tech, electrician, and one assistant, and also a bucket truck to go with that, and then one traffic signal technician, two, and two maintenance mechanic. One of the things that you'll see on here is the transfer for street sweeping. You see that there's an increase of two hundred thousand. In past years, the gas tax was able to help with the funding of this. At this time, the gas tax has been depleted, and we're shouldering the whole cost in the general fund. And Mr. Jeffcoat has come up to answer any questions that you may have.
Are you having a difficulty keeping up with the workload as it is right now?
That is correct. And just for an example, click to fix, just from last year to this year, for sidewalks, I've got a hundred and some, I think it's a hundred and twenty-three more click to fix work orders year-to-date related to sidewalks.
Mr. Hargit.
Thank you for the click to fix work. I have anecdotally tested it myself four or five times. I've had other people do it, and I have to say, within forty-eight hours, everything is fixed.
And, and that's the goal. The, the goal, as we've talked about before, is, is to try to get everything done within a forty-eight hour time period, but, uh, with the numbers that we're seeing, that, uh, level of service is going down without the support that we're asking for.
It's, um, you know, it's, it's, it's quite one thing to offer this to the citizens and then not to be able to follow through, so, um, it's, I've heard nothing but positive things about click to fix, I think overall, um, it's going to reduce, uh, any sort of strife or level that citizens feel, they walk past a pothole every day or something on the sidewalk and they, you know, have no easy way to communicate it, and then now we're offering this, uh, I think it's really important that we follow through with it, and so I wanna thank, um, the department for doing that, and I very much support, um, that program, and I hear from the citizens as well, how pleased they are with it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, is anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Jeffco.
I know, you'll stick around.
The next, uh, slide is for engineering, tab thirteen, and this department has sixteen point nine-three full-time positions. It includes in fiscal year twenty-three, two transportation planners that were moved from planning to engineering, and in addition to that change, uh, this budget proposes adding an engineering tech one and a capital projects manager. Any questions?
So your department's getting so far, seven additional positions.
The department, that is correct. Two of them are professionals, and then the, the five are related to, uh, dealing with the maintenance of, uh, the streets and highways.
Are, are we doing anything to make some of these processes easier? And, and it's sort of like a philosophical question, because, you know, we always think, if we wanna go further out into space, we wanna build a bigger ship with more firepower. We never talk about building a lighter ship, and a lighter ship can achieve the same outcome. And, and my question for this is, sure, we're gonna be processing way more sidewalk permits as we move forward, we anticipate. Have we internally worked on anything to make that easier, perhaps completely online and be less burdensome on the, on the, on the, the applicants?
I, I think, you know, that's a conversation that continues to happen with our Development Services Department in regards to, uh, combining those things and moving the, the software that, uh, they've invested in forward, uh, to be able to make it more efficient across the board. Uh, we, we continue to look at that with them and, uh, try to make those adjustments and, and work through those processes.
Mayor, if I, if I may.
Mr. Brown.
You know, when you look at the positions that we're adding, um, you know, we talk about how the level of service or in terms of requests have increased, um, we're adding more, um, individuals who actually do the work, uh, go out into the street, actually, um, uh, you know, as I say, you know, the, more of our blue collar type workers, and we are adding individuals in the offices themselves.
Well, this is just engineering, and we're adding two people, but we're increasing the budget by a million.
Right, so in terms of engineering, yes, you know, the individuals who process those requests that come in, that have to actually do the, the actual, you know, design and/or, um, you know, actually, you know, you know, you know, create the, 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 the designs that, you know, the other staff have to go out and perform, uh, you're talking about two individuals in a department of, how many?
And, and, well, you, I think it's what, sixteen altogether?
You're about to be seventeen.
Oh, yeah.
Seventeen. Now, the, you also have to remember, we're also included in that number that you're looking at, that million dollars, is also the two transportation planners that were previously in the Planning Department, that is now moving over to our department. Uh, so that's about half that cost in regards to the salary side of it.
Okay, so it's, it's an increase that happened during the year that you're budgeting for, that we didn't.
That is correct.
Got it. Okay. All right, those are all my questions, anybody else? Okay, none? Thank you.
Thank you. The next division that we'll take a look at is homelessness response. There are three point five full-time positions in this department. If you look at the special services and the grants and aids, we have comprehensive treatment court of a hundred and eighty thousand, Salvation Army of forty thousand, lodging out-of-doors of four hundred and eleven thousand, Homeward Bound, five hundred thousand, and a Sun Coast Partnership.
Five thousand.
Five thousand. Sun Coast Partnership to end homelessness of sixty-five thousand. Any questions?
Commissioner Anka.
Um, I had a question about the Florida Housing Coalition amount that was the amended, um, in twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two, nineteen thousand two hundred and forty-four, and that there's zero, why, what is that?
If you recall, that was a study that we did, um, so we already did a study, so we don't have.
Okay, so that was for a study, okay.
Um, I had a question on the amount that we give to the Salvation Army.
Okay, we do.
That amount, I see forty thousand, but that number, I believe it's significantly higher.
We do forty thousand out of the general fund in this, this department, the homelessness response, and we also budget forty thousand from the CRA. It was originally when the program, when we started the program, we had the entire portion in the CRA, but when the downtown CRA sunsetted, we moved that portion over into the general fund.
How, and this includes the cost that we pay per bed, for the beds?
No, this is the street teams that pick up garbage downtown and in Newtown area.
And for, can you explain a little bit what street teams are? I was under the impression that street teams was if any individual in the city of Sarasota is, is transient homeless and they are seeking, uh, a job that we can offer one to them, is that correct?
Correct, through the Salvation Army, so it's through the Salvation Army that we pay this, uh, this service.
Do we, I mean, we know we paid that, we know that we budgeted forty, we know the actual was forty, how, but do we know what the actual, actual was that they paid?
Um, it's probably much more than this, uh, Ms. Jones, if you wanna come on down.
I mean, do, do we have any sort of data as to how many people are in it, you know, what the, what the, has, how many, how many individuals have used this program to get services and, and actually better their situation, or, uh, you know, if, we, we, how do we know if it's succeeding? Do we know?
For Ms. Jones to introduce herself, Mayor, a very good question, we used to have the actual Salvation Army come every year and do, uh, um, a report when we have this, uh, this contract, um, come before the commission, so I think it's probably high time that we have them come back and share those, uh, those statistics and that data, but, um, you know, Ms. Jones, if you can introduce yourself and kind of share a little bit about the program.
So I'm Deidre Jones, the coordinator of homelessness response for the city. Um, I have spoken with street, with the Salvation Army recently regarding street teams, and it actually does not cover the full cost of the program, so they actually use other resources to fund that. Um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, um, had, I know that would be requested, I definitely would have prepared for that, but they, it's been utilized quite often. We have sent several individuals into that program from our beds and moved into their beds, um, so it, it's definitely been a successful program, and we do see them out there every morning picking up trash downtown.
So we'll get you that information, um, Commissioner.
Perhaps divert, you know, some of the services to Sunday, you know, Sunday cleaning, as we have received some concerns about what Monday, yeah.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. And again, one, one of the questions the mayor, um, has, has posed to me was, obviously, after a Saturday, a night, um, you know, Sunday, uh, basically is left with a lot of, you know, trash debris in the street, and then Monday is when we actually get to it, is there an opportunity for us to, you know, get some assistance on Sunday so that when individuals come into our downtown or wherever, um, that, you know, they have somewhat of a clean city? So we are working with, uh, Public Works and I've had some conversations, uh, with Ms. Jones to see what we can do. I don't have an answer for you yet, Mayor, but we are looking at that.
Um, you know, I, I have the honor of representing this commission with the Sun Coast Partnership to end homelessness, so I'm on that board. We pay sixty-five thousand dollars a year for that, but what is, do we receive any tangible benefit to that, are we, are we seeing? I mean, I understand having a better relationship with the Sun Coast Partnership, um, do we know what that money is going for, towards, uh, do we know if there's any accountability measure placed in there?
So it does work for sustainability of the services that they provide our community in general. Um, we also use our housing locator when we have a voucher available for one of our clients, and they help us locate housing for them, so it benefits us in that way as well. Um, it's just really utilizing the services that they provide, we depend on them a lot with their, um, information system, that they upkeep all the information of all of the homeless individuals or pit counts, give us a lot of information of how we're helping individuals in our community, so that's really what the funds go towards.
Um, is there any housing right now for, can we even use a housing locator?
Uh, we have used a housing locator, we're, we're implementing new systems right now. Um, a project is occurring right now with Sun Coast Housing Collaborative, where we're trying to bring in landlords to be able to have more availability for housing.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Anka.
No, nothing, I already asked my question.
You did. Commissioner Brody.
The, um, costs that we pay to the Salvation Army for our beds, do you know them off the top of your head?
I believe the request in there was just over four hundred thousand for the next year.
Uh, okay. Twenty-nine thousand dollars a month, something like that.
It's, so right now, it's twenty-five dollars a day, or, excuse me, thirty-five dollars a day per bed, and we have twenty-five beds there currently.
Are we using all of them?
We definitely are keeping the numbers up to at least fourteen, leaving some available for law enforcement to be able to utilize lodging out-of-doors when needed.
The, um, Community Care Court, uh, I see dashes in there, why is that?
I am actually fulfilling the position of the coordinator, so I've just included it with my duties with the city.
Okay, so we're not contributing hard money to Community Care Court?
We are not at this time, no.
But we are to Comprehensive Treatment Court?
Yes.
And that's all over the place, it's gone four hundred and twenty and twenty-two and a hundred and eighty for the proposed budget?
Yes, they've found other ways to fund their program that they needed to.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Questionnaire to you.
Oh, now, um, for our discussion, how many employees do you say you have?
I have two full-time employees at this time.
And what, what were the four, four that we spoke of? You said that take care of, uh, homelessness response or whatever.
I, I'm.
Did we, did you say four, you had four people that, uh, uh, yeah, I thought we spoke about that, and you said it was, you, you had four people on staff or whatever that took care of when, when you, yourself, myself and, uh, um, Mr. Posack spoke.
So, Vice Mayor, unless that was when Mr. Stiff was transitioning out?
No, we just had a conversation just the other day.
Just the other day.
The officers assigned to the hot team?
Maybe the officers, that's probably what you're thinking of.
Is that what, is it?
There are four officers specifically assigned to the hot team, yes, sir. So that could be the four, but she has two clinical caseworkers herself and, um, and the, and the four officers, that's probably where the number four came from.
So, two, to take care of a population of how many?
Uh, right now, the current pit count was two hundred and twenty-two in the city of Sarasota of chronically homeless, yeah.
Ms. Jones, pit?
I'm sorry.
Point in time.
Point in time. I apologize.
Quite a bit, yeah, you know, um, yeah. Now, I think I, I made some sort of proposal, uh, not long ago about us, you know, sort of lobbying the state or writing a letter to the state or something like that, to try and get some of these other municipalities to, to take on the burden that, you know, so we don't have to, to, uh, take on the cost of this, you know, so much, you know? I mean, we're basically providing all the services for the homeless, you know, practically in the, in the, in this region, you know, so, um, and a lot of it, you know, in my district, in District One, pretty much, no, I'm sorry, not, not a lot of it, all of it. Yeah, so, um, yeah, so I think that might be something that, uh, we may need to sort of, uh, push, you know, some type of initiative in that way, um, because it's, it's, it's not fair, it's not even fair for, for, uh, for the, the, those that need those services and whatnot, you know? You can't expect, what, two or three people to, to kind of give the, the proper service that, that, that they need to that, that population of people, you know? So, I, I, I think, you know, just to sort of alleviate some of the burden on ourselves, particularly in way of expense, um, that some of these other cities and municipalities around here, you know, pick up their share, as opposed to picking them up and sending them to us, so, you know, just a thought.
Commissioner Albert.
Um, the, you said the point in time count was two twenty-three in the city?
Two hundred and twenty-two in the city.
Yeah. Isn't that down, though? I mean, I, you know, the, yes, down significantly, um, and so I think that, that's a, that's a good sign, I think, you know, if we had, um, more people, it would be wonderful, and to be able to go out, and I'm sure you feel the same way, if you had more people to help you, it'd be great, so I was surprised you didn't have a, a budget issue, um, but the perception from some people, I don't get it a lot, but I still get a perception from some people that feel like the homeless count has increased, so I was surprised to hear you say it's actually, it, you know, it's really gone down. When I first got on the commission, it was eleven hundred something, I mean, it was, it was huge, so with the homeless outreach team, you know, they've really done a tremendous job, and all these other, the comprehensive court, you know, the, the Community Care Court, all of these things have really contributed to bringing that down a lot, so, good to know, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Dee Dee does an amazing job, she's everywhere at once.
Yeah.
Commissioner Anka, so you pushed it.
Yeah, I just want, just to jump off of your point as well, I was going to, um, just to highlight, uh, it was in two thousand and fourteen that it was eleven hundred and four, so in eight years, from eleven hundred and four to two hundred and twenty-two, you know, it's important to keep perspective, you know, it's, it's, it's something that we continue to, to work on, but from where we were eight years ago to today is a tremendous amount of progress, and I think that that, um, comparison deserves underscoring. Not that we always can't keep doing more and striving to do better, um, but it's also important to keep that perspective. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Brody.
Um, I think that's a good point, um, just one thing to keep in mind, uh, Commissioner Baty, when you said, um, request funds from the other municipalities, at first that, uh, strikes me as a good idea, um, uh, but I guess my only concern moving forward is, does that lend ourselves more to being the kind of responsible one for the regions, um, you know, homeless and just mental health and substance abuse issues, um, or should some of those services start to be offered in other areas of the county? And, you know what I mean? Like, you don't wanna further that goal, I get, you know, we want, we want them to pay their fair share of what we're providing their, for their community, but we also don't want it to become more of like, okay, this is now formalized that you're gonna take care of all this.
And, you know, and, uh, you know, to, to answer your question, Commissioner Brody, um, what I was speaking to is not, not so much like, uh, receiving funds from other municipalities, but them doing their fair share in term of, terms of offering services, um, and that's, you know, to have it spread out, you know, they can't just look at Sarasota as a vacation spot, you know? A lot of them are, are, you know, we spoke of this, you know, they have a season, just like, you know, there's snowbirds too, you know, you know, um, so, um, but it was more or less like to sort of spread the services, spread, spread the, uh, spread the wealth, but I just wanted to say, you know, um, thank you all for, for the work that you do, and that you're doing a tremendous job, and glad that, uh, you know, Commissioner Albert and, uh, Commissioner Anka pointed that out, you know.
Yeah, generally, I think it's a good, it's a, a good, um, direction and a good kind of, um, you know, decision discussion for us to be making, I just wanted to kind of point out that counterbalance that sometimes we get and communities get caught into, um, kind of being the de facto responsible one for those issues versus dealing with the issues you already have, and it's, it's a total, you know, it's a tough issue, but I also wanted to just point out. And it's a total, you know, it's a tough issue, but I also wanted to just point out SPD's success and recognition nationwide in our hot team and our homeless approach. So it's not just us complimenting you, it's really objectively speaking, a well-recognized and a great program that's been recognized across the country as a leader.
All right. Thank you. All right, three more. Let's try to get this done before lunch.
Just want to make sure that's everybody's preference, we'll go ahead and get through and then we can break or?
I mean, if we get through these next three, we're done. Till tomorrow.
We're getting good. There's a hope.
No.
General.
No.
For tomorrow, do you still have this afternoon?
The what?
Well, we're going to break into special revenue.
For this afternoon?
For this afternoon.
Oh, I thought you meant for the day.
I thought we were done.
That's what I understood.
I need you to come back, please. I need you to come back.
That's what I understood.
Yeah, me too. I was like, wow, are you kidding?
All right.
All right, this will, a couple more slides and we'll finish out for the morning though. The next division is special events. That's on tab 15. There are four full-time employees in here and we have proposed in this budget an additional full-time position. And actually what we're asking to do is to convert a part-time position into a full-time position.
Excellent.
Any questions about this? Okay.
No questions.
All right, I'm going to move forward. We're getting close. Non-park maintenance, this is the portion of Parks and Rec that has nothing to do with the parks. He takes care of the medians and public areas of the city. There are 17.33 full-time employees in this budget. Are there any questions on this?
Yes. After, Commissioner Aaron Koch.
The 15 to 17.33 is a shift.
We are shifting from, shifting from Parks and Rec to non-park.
Yep, my only question, thank you.
Okay. All right.
I just wanted to say, the conversation we've had in private, I'd like to kind of put them on the record, which is eventually we should be shifting over into what they like to call hardscaping, which is landscaping that requires less watering, less maintenance. It's being adopted over like, you know, the drier regions of the country like in Arizona, but it's a lot of plants that don't require a lot of maintenance and it's a lot of rocks and it's, you know, it doesn't require the maintenance that contains any glyphosate and it's just overall easier on the budget and saves on water and saves on all sorts of expenses. But anyway, I support this. I have nothing else to add on that.
The next slide is Parks and Rec and as you recall, last year you made the decision to make Parks and Rec from its own fund into the general fund, which is what you see in here. It has a very minimal increase of 101,602. There are 67.67 full-time employees in here and in this budget, one position is being requested to convert from two part-time positions to one full-time position, so it's cost neutral.
Misses? Commissioner Aaron Koch?
So my question has to do with the Bobby Jones and the nature park. Maybe this is a question for the city manager about, I had fully expected to see somebody added to this department for that nature park as we go forward with that. Can you speak to that?
So again, Mayor Commissioners, right now we don't have the nature park, you know, fully vetted. At this time, we're working with the Conservation Foundation on that. We are first going to do a study, that's in the budget for next year, to kind of determine how we will master plan that park. One of the things that we have been in discussions with the Conservation Foundation is the maintenance of the park. We will continue to do what we call routine maintenance, like we have actually done over the overall Bobby Jones golf course. So there's a cost that's already included in their budget. The enhanced maintenance that will come with the nature park and I hope that enhanced maintenance is, you know, almost minimal since it will be more of a natural setting. That will be determined, working with the Conservation Foundation as to what that will entail. I don't know if it will entail additional staffing, but until we do that master plan that we have funded, I would not know that cost. And so I don't foresee that in next year's budget, maybe the following year's budget.
Okay, so then for all of 2023, we don't anticipate any added costs for the nature park, like pathways or playgrounds or water fountains or anything?
So those are capital costs and if you will recall, in the upcoming penny that we have on the November ballot, the funding for those capital improvements are included in that penny.
Let me see up here at the end.
All right. So again, operating is what I think you are more interested in. And again, until we do that master plan, until we know where the paths are going to be, what type of benches, so on and so forth, restrooms, until we know that, that is when we will then determine what the additional operating cost will be.
Okay, so we don't anticipate any of those for 23?
Not for next year.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Excellent. So we're good. Is that it for the morning session?
Just one more note and then we'll be through. What I did on this slide is to summarize the expenditures for the general fund by function and you can see where we're increasing in this FY '23 proposed budget, transportation is 35.6% increase and I think Mr. Jeffcoat explained about the additional personnel and additional functions that he's working with to pay for. And the other one that you see is the other financing. You see the increase of 1.1 million 850,000. 1.6 of that is the Bobby Jones debt service payment and the other 200,000 is the additional for the street sweeping. That gives us a total variance in our general fund expenditures from the prior year of $7.5 million. And that does conclude the general fund presentation and Mayor, if you'll tell us when you want us to come back this afternoon?
Come back here 1:15.
Thank you.
All right.
1:15.
1:15.
1:15.[1078.23]
The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response. The first step is to identify the target. You need to identify the target and then use it to generate a response.
Welcome back, everyone. We're resuming this budget workshop for fiscal year 2223. I hope you all enjoyed your lunch. When we left off, we finished reviewing the general fund and now Kelly was going to lead us into the special revenue funds. Ms. Strickland.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So as the mayor stated, we're going to talk about special revenue funds for a little bit. These are funds that are used to account for and report the proceeds of specific revenue sources that are restricted for either committed, that are either restricted or committed for specific expenditures for specific purposes. I'll get that out. So in the grand scheme of things, this is the slide that you saw in the very first presentation. And as you can see, I've highlighted the special revenue funds. There's an increase of $1.1 million or 3.4%. Now, I want to point out that special revenue funds, they are restricted in nature. Their revenues are restricted for specific expenditures. And if those expenditures are not made in that year, then the funds just roll over to the new year. So whatever dollars are collected in these funds, stay in these funds until they're expended for the specific purpose that they were generating. This slide gives us a list of all of our special revenue funds that we have. And then each of these funds has an ordinance or a resolution attached that sets up the fund. You can see there's quite a few. Now, I will take a point right now to say that we are working on the implementation of an ERP system. This is a new accounting system and during this process, we're trying to clean up our account numbers and our funds so that we don't have quite so many and that we can report them more in a consolidated manner to you. It's going very well. We're about seven months into the process and our go-live date is projected at April 2023. April? April. And as of yet, we're on schedule. First special revenue fund that we're going to take a look at is Golden Gate Streetcape Special District. This is an operating fund. They also have a debt service fund. In the operating fund, the purpose is to pay for the enhanced operations of watering the street scape if they have flowers, planting them, all the operational needs. It is supported by a millage that is requested by the residents of Golden Gate. The additional millage, as I said, it keeps the maintenance and the upkeep of landscaping and street scape within the district. The assessed value of Golden Gate on July 1st is $331,620,328. This is a 16.11% increase from the prior year. Now, the Golden Gate assesses a millage for operating and debt service. And later in the presentation, you'll see a debt service section where we talk about the Golden Gate debt service and the millage for that. The city commission is the governing board for the Golden Gate. Are there any questions on this budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Revenue, total expenses exceed revenues by about $30-some thousand dollars. Was there a discussion with them about perhaps having a balanced budget?
We talked to them about, let's see, that is TAB 18. Let me turn to it. They have a fund balance. If you look at TAB 18, they have a fund balance of $235,000 from September 30th, 2021. We expect at the end of this fiscal year, they're going to have a fund balance of $213,000. And rather than increase their millage, we ask them to use some of their fund balances down because it is specifically for the purpose of their street scape operating. That was the point of the revenue, not increasing the millage, just so that they use some of that.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner, is anybody else done? All right, move on.
Economic development. This is TAB 19. This fund was created and adopted by Resolution 17R-2668. This is where we put the city's local business tax receipts. The proposed budget aligns the funding to the current city commission strategies and $782,000 is allocated to a citywide trolley is a portion of the total expenses that are allocated for 2022 and 23. Other funding sources for the trolley, just to bring that up, is $50,000 from the did and $50,000 through the bid. And also, I believe what's coming to you is another budget amendment to accept a grant. We are in line to receive a grant for the trolley for three years. We've already received one year, we're working on year two, and then year three, and that'll be an additional $500,000 for each year for that purpose. If you take a look at this, you can see the 782 for the trolley. There are administrative costs such as credit card fees, banking, that type thing, legal services. And then there's also a transfer to parking for the outside cafes. During COVID, the outside cafes became more prevalent. People were, or restaurants were asking us to put their tables in the parking spots, which took up the parking revenue that would potentially be generated there. And as an economic expense, we have budgeted a transfer to parking to recover these expenses.
Commissioner Hargit.
Thank you. This is probably a question for Mr. Brown. Back in 2019, there was an economic development study that was done by the Office of Economic Development for the North Trail. And this is the project and it was, a draft was presented. I don't know where this is on the, in the plan because it's not on the projects here. I know this was right before COVID hit. This could have been one of those things that was on our list of things to do. Here's the plan here in case you all haven't seen it, that just sort of during COVID fell by the wayside. If we could, I could just get an update on this.
Can you address that? Okay, good, great. A little bit. So if you turn to 19-2 in economic development, what it does, it breaks down the budget for this current year by project. And you can see the North Trail, North Trail set a legacy trail on that of $750,000. It's there and it will stay there until it's used.
But this is not a legacy trail. This is just, just the North Trail itself. And it's piggybacking off of a previous study that was done in 2016 and then where they are with some of those recommendations. Some of them were no longer applicable and so it's a little bit different than the legacy trail.
I'm not familiar with it, Commissioner, so I'll have to get a copy of it.
Sure.
But you're saying it was done under the Economic Development Division?
Mr. Chaplin knows what I'm talking about. This was presented to the North Trail Redevelopment Partnership by Ms. Dodd.
Ryan Chaplin, Planning Department. Correct. Ms. Dodd worked on, I think, just some concepts at the time back in 2019. I don't know that it went much further. Certainly, you mentioned COVID. Nothing happened since COVID. So I think it was more just some general concepts she discussed with the North Trail Redevelopment Partnership.
Yeah, there were also, there was, I think, a recommendation for a budget to further study this, to look into some of these because some of her recommendations were partially completed, like from 2006. Some of them were not applicable and some of them were recommended to perhaps go forward. And then there was even a sort of budget request in here. But again, I think this just because of COVID, sort of no more meetings, no more gatherings. I think it just sort of fell off. I'll happy to make you a copy.
Was there a reason we were doing this? I mean, was that a request of the commission or did she just do this on her own?
She may have been just, I know what you're referring to. I think she was just looking at doing this maybe more on her own as part of the office that was up in the Newtown area. Yes, yes.
So again, I will have to evaluate whether this is something the commission needs to give us direction on to pursue. And so I have no problem bringing this back for commission direction if indeed this is something we want to pursue.
Okay. And like I said, it's just a, there were some recommendations made in 2006 and it's just bringing those back, following up on it, and then going forward, do we continue to look into those, that sort of economic development or not, so.
All right. No questions, let's continue.
Okay. If you take a look at TAB 20, this Community Redevelopment Agency, this slide just recaps the taxable value for FY '22 and then the proposed FY '23. You can see it's a portion of the city. And as I stated, the city's value went up 17.85%. The Newtown CRA went up 16.06. This base year was reset in 2017 and the amount of the revenues that they receive from Admiral Lorrum is the difference between the base year and the new value. This year, we're, at the fiscal year '23, we're proposing that the TIF generates $256,447. The fund is budgeted on TAB 20 and you can see, so we have a beginning fund balance of $232,000, revenues projected of $393,000, which includes a repayment of a did loan that was made back in 2013. The projects in the initiatives equal $480,000 for an ending fund balance of $145,000. In your book, if you look at page 20-2, you can see a detail of the projects that are currently in the budget under the amended budget column and then the projects that are included in the new dollars in the budget-2223 column. Are there any questions on that?
Commissioner Hargit.
And this is not a question for Ms. Strickland, this is probably for the city manager. Do we know how many acres this makes up?
Community redevelopment area. I'm sure staff has that number at hand. We'll get it to you.
Thank you. Any other questions? That's it.
Okay, moving on.
All right. TAB 21 is the St. Armin's Business Improvement District. They have a beginning fund balance of $321,364. The revenues that they are generating are $351,917. The assessed value in the bid at July 1st is $183,290,000. This is an increase of 9.55% from the prior year. And the millage for the bid is two mills. The bid is a dependent taxing district authority with a governing board that is appointed by the city commission. And unless renewed, the bid is set to sunset on 9/30/2023. Questions? Yes.
Commissioner Alper.
Why is the bid due to sunset?
It is, go ahead.
The statute that it was originally created under provides for 10-year terms and then it's renewed. So it's pursuant to the Florida statute.
So it can be extended?
Sure, but they have to have a referendum.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And it would be extended for another 10 years.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Hargit.
When would that referendum have to take place?
Before the expiration, in September. So I know that there has been some discussion of it and it has to be initiated by petition of 20% of the property of the landowners. And then it's a mail-away petition and there's like, I think it's a, you have four months to complete it via the mail in the city auditor.
So we can have a special election?
No, it's a by-mail election and the property owners vote, you have to have 20% of the landowners to call the election. Then the election actually is based on the assessed value of the property. So someone whose property is assessed higher, their vote is worth more for the property.
Right, okay. So it's just a mail amongst themselves?
Yes.
And who administers that?
The city clerk.
City clerk, okay. Yeah, I know they were just, they were talking about it, but I wasn't sure the details of how that worked.
Commissioner Alper.
Is this something the bid has to initiate amongst itself?
They have come forward.
To work on?
Right, to start with the signatures and then they come forward and then the commission officially calls the election.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah, just, I'm just making an observation that expenditures are $662,000 and revenues are $351,000, which is almost double.
Again, they're using down their fund balance.
All right, moving on. All right, moving on.
Just to point out, when I mentioned that these special revenues are using down their fund balance, for the most part, they, they're not operating funds, they're special purpose The Downtown Improvement District is Tab twenty-two. They have a beginning fund balance of two hundred and fifty-three thousand. They have projected revenues of seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand. The assessed value in the did as of July thirty, July first, is four hundred and eighteen million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. This is a ten point zero-seven percent increase from the prior year. The did millage is two mills. They are a dependent taxing authority with governing board that is appointed by the City Commission. And this is one, if you look at their expenditures, they do have the transfer to the CRA. As I mentioned earlier, that's a repayment of a loan that was started back in two thousand and thirteen. It's a fifteen-year loan, so we're getting close to the end of that. They are spending down their fund balance to eight thousand, if they spend everything that is budgeted.
Questions, Commissioner Hargitze?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight on this one as well, along the lines of questioning of the mayor, that there's an electrical equipment maintenance fee that, or expense that was zero in twenty-one, and then it went up to sixty-nine, and now it's proposed for two hundred and thirty-six, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, so in two years, going from zero to two hundred and thirty-seven. Do we know what that is?
It's the holiday lights.
The holiday lights are the lights that are year-round?
Whatever's in the did district that they're paying for. Julie can expand on that.
Hi, Julie Ryan, for the record. Yes, those are the lights that you see downtown. It's the...
What's your position, sir?
I'm the business district manager for the bid in the did, sorry. There's a total of three hundred and thirty-three lights, lighted trees throughout the downtown, and that is what, it goes to, towards replacing the string of lights. It goes for the maintenance of it. We are looking for some ways to cut that cost, trying to use different vendors and/or try to see what we can utilize with city staff. So we do have some things in the works that we're hoping that we can reduce that line item with, but it does have a lot of maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Yep.
In proportion to the budget, in proportion to everything else, it's quite significant.
Yep.
And so I was, was going to ask the question that the mayor was probably going to ask, are there any efficiencies?
Yes. That's, yeah, that's part of mine, is not only the efficiencies with both business districts, to try to see what we can do to cut some of those maintenance items, because a lot of their funds are strictly for maintenance.
Thank you.
I don't think we've met, but one of the ideas that we've talked about with the, I've talked about the city manager is going to uplighting...
Yes.
Instead of the Christmas lights during the year-round portion of the year, and then augmenting it with Christmas lights for the holiday season. You know, I just think that the elements, and it's just been very difficult to maintain a level of service that looks presentable.
Yes.
So, keep that in mind.
May I ask a question?
Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Hargitze?
Can you just explain what you mean by uplighting? I don't know what that is.
Uplighting, yeah, lights on the ground. So on Main Street in front of, like, the Five Points Building, or I don't remember the name of it, but they have built-in lights in the ground that just light the palm tree. You can do lights on the palm tree that light the palm tree, and it gives the same effect. It's beautiful when it's done right, and I think it's a lot more sustainable and durable.
Sounds like a good solution.
It's getting the electrical in the actual tree beds is what's going to be the tricky part of that, is to get those, the electric where we need the electric.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
On Tab twenty-three, you'll see Development Application System. This is to account for and collect charges incurred in the review and the approval of development applications. And according to the code, the Land Development Code, these revenues are to go toward the cost of recording and processing these applications. So we have operating costs of three hundred and three thousand, and we have a transfer to the General Fund of four hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Say that one more time?
We have, we have operating costs of three hundred and three thousand, and then we have a transfer to the General Fund of four hundred and ninety-three thousand, and that's the General Funds portion of salaries and people that work on the development application system.
Any questions, Commissioner? Nope, moving on, thank you.
The next tab that I'm going to point you to is twenty-nine. This is the Housing and Community Development tab. And what you see here are the various housing and community development grants. We have Neighborhood Stabilization Program two and three, just a tiny bit for those, the CDBG grant, the Home Program, the State Housing Initiative Partnership, which is, we shortened to SHIP, and then expenditures allocated with the county, and we work in partnership with the county. As you can see, our revenues equal our expenditures, that's because these are grants.
We skipped through some tabs.
We did. Those were CIP, we'll come back to them, I apologize.
Okay.
For not mentioning that. Are we ready to move on?
Could you, for purposes of those of us who don't have tabs, tell us what page it is? Because, you know, on our, on our iPads, we just have a page.
I just, I just wanted to say, who was in charge of preparing this? I'm sure, I'm correct. I just wanted, no, thank you. The, the, the revenues match the expenditures exactly, and is balanced, so...
Commissioner Albert, we don't have the electronic version, but on each page that you see, there's a page number at the bottom that has a number and a...
Ours doesn't, yeah. Mine just says page two hundred and seventy-six of four ninety-four, it doesn't have pages related to the different tabs.
She has the, what you all sent us is the upload for Granicus.
Housing.
So whatever you all gave us is...
Okay, it's the one that says Housing and Community Development?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I saw that, okay. But yeah, see, ours doesn't have that at all, so we're like, you know, if it's going in order, we're okay, but if it's not, it's...
Yeah, it's a little bit, it skips like five, five tabs.
Yeah.
Here, Housing and Community?
Yes, thank you.
Jump forward a little bit. Tab thirty, Public Art. As you can see, there's no revenues that are budgeted in this fund. Those are received as donations or when a permit is purchased. Fifty-three thousand is budgeted for the maintenance of the current public art. We have put in a hundred and fifty budgeted for smaller public art projects where the opportunities occur. And what I mean smaller, smaller than a hundred and fifty, so that our staff doesn't come back to you at every point for ten thousand here, twenty thousand there. And as the revenues are received for specific projects, a budget amendment is taken to the City Commission for approval. So if we get in two hundred thousand, it goes to a specific roundabout or so, you would see that on a budget amendment in the agenda.
Excellent. No, no questions, yeah.
The next fund that we have is Tab thirty-one, Building Services. Section five-five-three, point eight, Florida statutes, provides the guidelines for this special revenue fund. Fees, uh-oh, excuse me. Fees collected must be used only for the purpose of carrying out the city's responsibilities in enforcing the Florida Building Code. I mentioned earlier that we reviewed the personnel that were coded to Development Services code compliance in Building Services, and found that we needed to do some reallocations because we had people that were working for code compliance or working for Development Services that should be coded there as opposed to Building Services. Eight point two million of the current fund balance is going to be re-appropriated for a new building. And according to House Bill four forty-seven, Building Code, any carryover in excess of the past four years' operating budget, it cannot be exceeded. So every year, we do a calculation, the operating budget for the past four years, and make sure that the carryover that we plan to use doesn't exceed that amount. And just what that means is, is we've got, we've got a building in process, and we've got to spend those funds. If you have too much money in this fund after that date, then we'll have to find a way of distributing it, or really reduce our fees in the future.
Commissioner Hargitze?
I just wanted to say that the bottom here, it says percentage of undecided fund balance in operating expenses, and then it has the twenty-eight point one-three percent. I really appreciated seeing that on...
And this one is an operating fund, because it has a lot of salaries and, and people.
Yeah, I just appreciated seeing that.
Thank you.
Are, this, the revenues were five point eight million, and the expenditures were six point two, is that because we were going into our fund balance?
Yes, we're using a little bit of fund balance. We intend to use a lot of fund balance this year, though, with the, the new building.
How much is our expenditures without the new building and all that stuff?
Six point two million is what we're projecting for proposed year fiscal twenty-three.
And revenues were only five point eight?
Yes, sir.
How do you make those numbers work in the future?
Well, as I said, we can't carry over too much money, and the point is to spend down this fund a little bit. It has, it has a bit too much.
So what are we spending on?
The operations of the services...
Oh, okay.
...that are provided.
And that is going to, you're still going to have enough money to build the building and spend down...
Yes.
...for operations?
Yes.
How did that, I guess I'm confused how that happened, because we built up this big fund balance because we were charging more than expenses for quite some time, apparently.
The plan has been to build a, a building for a long...
Forget about that for a minute. We, we ended up with that money in our fund balance because we were charging more overall than we were spending on maintaining the department, on running the department. I guess what changed or shifted over, what changed or shifted to make it so now that we're, now we're spending more than we're taking in?
So Commissioner, I don't know if you recall, I think, Ms. Panica can probably help me, I think a couple of years ago, the mayor, who was then a commissioner, had asked for additional personnel to be put into the Building Department to help with inspections and to help with the processing of, of applications. So a lot of that may have...
Talking about me?
No, not you.
Okay.
The, the mayor now, who was then a commissioner, I don't know...
Oh, this guy?
Yeah, this guy, yeah. If you recall, you know, there was a concern about not having enough personnel in the Building Division to help with inspections and, and, you know, plans review, and so we added some additional personnel over, you know, over the years in this division, you know, without increasing revenue. So, you know, that may have attributed to why expenses are now, you know, reaching revenues.
Okay. And the goal is in time to bring some equilibrium to that?
Correct.
Okay.
So we're not overcharging, you know, developers for the processing of their site plans and building.
Residents. I mean, not just developers, it's residents as well.
Residents and, and...
I mean, salaries have remained relatively stable, just so you know. So it's two point one million was actual for twenty-one, even though there was a two point four million budget. In twenty-two, the actual was one point eight so far, budget's two point five, and then the budget for twenty-three is actually less, so two point four. So is it, I mean, it appears that there's less staff.
Remember, we also shifted some of those...
To Development Services.
...because they...
The shuffle.
Right, the shuffle.
Mm-hmm.
Did we have to do that?
We had to do that, yeah.
Okay.
To comply with the Florida statute.
All right.
Okay. Tab thirty-two is the Stadium Grant. This is an, the, this is our, we get five hundred thousand dollars every year, and we transfer it straight to our debt service fund to pay the debt service that we have on the stadium. The amount outstanding at September twenty-three is six point four million dollars. This basically is an in-and-out fund. Questions?
No questions. Moving on.
This is a new fund, and I, I believe we had it in the presentation last year, but it has a little bit more activity this year, the Bay TIF, the Tax Increment Financing District. The Bay TIF was established with city ordinance twenty dash fifty-three forty-one and county ordinance twenty dash fifty-six. The base year is two thousand and nineteen with a value of eight hundred and fifty million. The Bay TIF is a thirty-year TIF, and it will sunset on December thirty-first, two thousand and forty-nine. The assessed value for the TIF is one billion, four hundred and ninety-nine million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand. That's a forty point three-nine percent increase from the prior year. The city's portion of the tax revenue generated from this TIF district is one million, seven oh seven, five thirty-six. And I'll just point out that the agreement between the county and the city and the bay was that the, the AdVolumum revenues calculated would be used either the lower of three point zero eight nine two, which was the county's millage at the time, or the city's millage, or the county's revised millage. Right now, with a proposed millage of three point zero 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 zero, the city is the lower, and that is what the revenues are based on. And as you can see this budget, the only thing that you're going to see are the revenues coming in. There have been no plans yet for the expenditures, which will be, when we do do expenditures, there will be debt service payments for any bonds or loans that are issued for that purpose.
Commissioner Albert?
Is, is that going to include the expenditures for a new performing arts center, or is that separate?
The agreement says that it will be approximately half when we do issue debt for this. Half will go toward the SPAC, and half will go toward the bay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on.
The Tree Replacement Fund. The fund balance in this of six hundred and sixteen is projected, sixteen thousand. Five hundred and eighty-six thousand of that is reserved for urban forestry and twenty-nine thousand for affordable housing. We also have in this, in the operating expense, we have a tree planning program that is paid from this.
Can you elaborate on the urban forestry program?
I'll have to ask Ms. Panica to come down.
Director of Development Services. So we just implemented the urban forestry program that has been highly anticipated. So we just implemented the urban forestry program that has been highly anticipated by the residents and the City Commission. We're concluding Phase 1, which is an inventory of trees within designated areas of the city, and then we'll be entering Phase 2, which is the master plan, and then Phase 3, which is planting. So we do anticipate to spend a lot more of the funds as we move forward with the program.
And the total cost would be $586,000?
We don't know exactly yet. We anticipate hiring or at least requesting an additional staff person, so depending on, you know, how we move forward with that.
And so, so let's say, you know, let's say, the fund balance recap, we've allocated $586,000 for urban forestry, $29,000 for affordable housing, we have $616,000, which is the entire fund balance that we have, and we have an ongoing staff person to maintain.
Not in this...
Not in this, it'll be a part of Development Services.
It's just a program.
And that is included in what you've already presented, or is...
No, that's...
This is upcoming?
This is upcoming, potentially, yes.
So do we know, I mean, what was, what was the revenues?
$105,000.
$105,000, that's, that's an odd year. Before that, it was 42, then it was 79. So it's all over the place, how much we receive on the tree fund. Do we know if these programs are sustainable? Do we, I mean, can we, can we implement a program not knowing that we have a steady source of revenue to maintain it?
So for the urban, for the urban forestry program, we can alter it to, to be sustainable. For example, some cities have a really robust program, a really elaborate master plan, a lot of staff, et cetera. Other jurisdictions have, you know, kind of a minimal, simple master plan with maybe one or two personnel, so we're not at the point yet of the program, but we will be taking a look at that.
Yeah, because this is, right now, we're using our entire fund balance on that, just... And was the urban forestry voted on by the commission?
Yes, it was.
But just keep in mind, that's the fund balance, which is like your reserves. The budget is only $135,000, so it's, we're building it up.
Yeah, but you've already allocated, I mean, it's already going to...
It's specific to that project, right? And until that project gets going, it will stay there.
Commissioner Herrkoch?
I know that we have a matching grant for the urban forestry program. Is that reflected in here somewhere?
We usually put grants in their own little box so that we don't mix the revenues or expenditures.
Okay.
And we only, we budget grants at the time we receive the grant, not during the budget workshops.
Okay, okay. And the total amount of the grant that we've received up to this point is $25,000?
I don't know.
It would be, for this phase, let me double check each phase. The phases that I described are, have different allocations, so let me just take a look.
And then my other question, which would also be for Ms. Panica, is about the Tree Legacy Program. Is that the planting program with Mr. Costa?
No, so that, let me double check, there was a, a change of terminology. The Tree Legacy Program, I believe, was the, the free trees that were given away one day a year on Arbor Day. The tree, the mature tree program is the Lou Costa program.
Okay, and so why don't we have anything for the Tree Legacy Program, the Arbor Day?
I was told that that's not being continued.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, what a shame. So Arbor Day is, they're not doing that anymore?
That's what I've been told, yeah, that's, that's coordinated through the Planning Department, through Sustainability.
Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead.
So the grant, the first year is $50,000, so that's an equal match, so we put in $25, and the state puts in $25. The second year for the master plan is $30,000, and then the third year is $30,000 as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So let me just get it straight about the Tree Legacy Program. Is it the program itself overarching is going away, or we are just not going to contribute to it?
I believe that the whole program is going away.
What a shame. Is that your understanding?
First, I'm hearing about it, but...
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, hold on a second. Stephen, could you address the Arbor Day program, please? And why there's no funding for it?
Steve Cover, Planning Department, Planning Director. I believe that was actually handled by Mark Miller, that was not our Planning Department, so...
Arbor Day?
Yeah.
Okay, so are we doing this?
We'll get back... We can get back to you, yeah.
I know the community really appreciated that, and it was a really nice program.
We have our governmental relations individual who...
Good afternoon, Stevie Freeman Montez, Governmental Relations Manager. As you know, I was serving as Sustainability Manager, and during my time there, we did do the Arbor Day Community Canopy Program. So I believe it did kind of follow sustainability, and then when the Lou Costa kind of larger program began, it did, we did decide to phase out and not do those and focus on the larger trees. That was my understanding, is that we didn't continue that program around that time because we were going to focus on the pilot of this.
And I did correspond with Jeff from Sustainability, and he's the one that told me that they weren't moving forward.
Correct. Okay, just curious why?
I believe it's still, I do believe it's still a national program as an option, but that we decided not to, to continue on with it while we focused on the larger tree program at the time.
And how much are we dedicating to the mature tree program?
$75,000. And it has been successful, we're in Phase 3, I believe.
There you go.
That's it, thanks.
Commissioner Brody, you had your name on there, did you speak already?
No.
All right, we're good, let's continue, thank you.
Tab 35 is Citizens with Disabilities. The revenue from this program is from the handicapped parking fine. Two-thirds of it, or $167, goes into this fund, and then the other $83 goes into the parking program. In this program, we have, our closed caption is paid for, and also this year, we're adding a beach wheelchair program for $22,000. That'll leave us with an ending fund balance of $42,549. Any questions?
No. Oh, Commissioner Albert?
Now, the beach wheelchair program, the $22,000, is that to buy the beach wheelchairs this year, or is that ongoing expenses?
Mason will come down and explain a little bit. Ms. Mason is going to come down and explain a little bit about that program.
Good afternoon, Stacy Mason, HR Director. Thank you for the question, Commissioner. We're quite excited, we've worked on this beach wheelchair for some time. It is called the Eco Rover, so it's an electronic individually-used wheelchair. We hope to purchase one, they're quite expensive, and then we need to store it at Lido and also maintain it. So we're still pushing forward, we hope to have it in this fiscal year, so we wanted to budget ahead for that.
Okay, so the $22,000 is to buy one and to maintain that one?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so then if we decide to expand it, we'll add another $22,000?
Yes, absolutely, yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Herrkoch has her name on there.
Just because I attended a meeting at Lido Beach, and they did a presentation about this, the difference between, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, what we have and what's being proposed, is that this is, allows somebody to be independent and go onto the beach as opposed to being pushed by somebody else. And so you would think, why are you spending so much more for another wheelchair, but it's, allows somebody that independence, am I correct?
Yes, you are correct, thank you. It's a great option for us to have at Lido, there is not one on this side of the state, so we're excited to get it in place. So it'd be a single-use, independent use for somebody to have mobility to get to the water and be on our beach, so we're very excited about that program.
Commissioner Brody?
Thank you.
I mean, just to point out the obvious, the revenues are $20,000 a year. We're spending $31 on closed captioning, and then $22 on the chair, which I totally support, but how are we going to keep this sustainable?
The chair is a one-time capital, but the administrative and maintenance, we would have to use out of the remaining revenue. So we wouldn't hopefully have that cost that high going forward, that capital purchase in time for that chair.
How do we even pay for our closed captioning, though? How do we even have a fund balance?
The tickets that are applied when people park in violation of the handicapped parking.
That doesn't generate that much, does it?
It does, yes.
It generates $20,000 a year?
Yes.
Okay, but closed captioning costs $31,000 a year.
So over time, it does fluctuate. You know, it's kind of a double-edged sword. We hope people don't violate and park, but if they do, a portion, a larger portion goes into this fund to maintain it. So there have been some years where it's been $25,000, $30,000 in revenue, so it does fluctuate in revenue.
How do we have a fund balance, though?
For some years that we haven't used it, or closed captioning has been lower. There were some years where closed captioning, if you guys recall, there was budget seasons where we had many lengths of commission meetings, closed captioning were applied to those. Different workshops, closed captioning was applied, so it's a matter of usage of closed captioning, so that can also kind of...
So it's higher, it's expensive, more expensive these days?
Closed captioning is?
Yeah. I noticed we don't even have closed captioning today.
Yes, we do.
Do we?
It's just you can't see it.
Oh.
Put the PowerPoint up.
Okay, I mean, I'm just pointing out the obvious, that the revenues don't support the expenses, but, yeah.
I'm going to echo that and just say, don't we have someone transcribing the meetings? Is that, is that...
Yes.
That is the close, that would be the same thing?
Yes, that's our vendor, closed caption vendor, that does it for commission meetings and budget workshops.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the last of the Special Revenue Funds budget presentation. I don't see our, some of the directors that I need for the next presentation, so if it's not too much trouble, could we jump to the debt service funds?
Mr. G, could you explain to the commission, because I don't want it to seem like personnel are not here, apparently this was scheduled for tomorrow?
Right, they were.
Okay.
We went really fast.
All right, could you explain that?
So we're done with Day 1, is what she's saying.
It's not like they're...
Excuse me.
We're done with Day 1, is what she's saying.
We went through it a lot faster than I have now. You can either go home, or we could do a few more.
Go home, we'll come back tomorrow.
A few more.
So again, Commissioners, we can either try to get everyone here, or we can, you know, wait until tomorrow.
Wait. Let's wait till tomorrow?
Wait till tomorrow.
Okay, let's do that.
Thank you.
Great job.